To order, can I have an acceptance to the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second? Second by Mr. Vignani, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we get started, I just want to mention a couple of quick things. Selectman Carron and Town Administrator Tricia Van Kezey, they're representing us in a FEMA meeting in Marshfield. The people from DC ran, and we've been, you know, we've been sort of arguing and fighting back and forth with FEMA for over the last four years as far as flood insurance, as well as placement of homes on these maps. And over the weekend, I ran into some people that were angry that have claimed that the town of Situate has done nothing to help their situation as far as with FEMA. And I really say that, you know, to these people that say that, you know, about four years ago, Selectman Harris, myself, Joe Norton representing the banking, Carol Bowman representing real estate, we went to a joint meeting in the legislature and we pushed this thing all the way to Washington DC. So for people to say that about the town of Situate, I find it very upsetting. As of tonight, we're going to spend about $100,000 trying to fight these things back. And I just want everybody to understand that we're doing everything we possibly can to fight basically the federal government. So that's all I want to say. Do we have any walk-ins this evening?
Well, we all walked in.
Okay. So we have a scheduled item for 7:05. It's a special event, St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Can we do this one last?
Yeah.
With Ed Kelly, is this?
Second.
So I'm going to let Tony take over for this part of the meeting. I'm going to recuse myself.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing fine, sir. How are you?
I'm doing great. So tell us what's up for the parade this year and why you're here.
Well, obviously, I'm here for the official approval of the town to have the parade on the 19th of March this year.
And that's the Sunday?
That is the Sunday, the following St. Patty's Day this year, correct.
Boston has the same day?
They do.
Any, uh, any reason why, it starts at what, 11?
I think 1:00.
Starts at 1:00.
Oh, 1:00, I'm sorry.
We start setting up 10:30, 11:00 in the morning.
So what's the time constraints that you're looking for?
Uh, usually 10:30 till the parade ends, typically 3:00, 3:30-ish, somewhere around there.
Right. I don't see any.
Maybe ask the chief seeing how he's here. Probably not here for this, but you know, see if his, nothing's changed.
No, no. I already met with Sergeant Gilmott to go over the details that the police had, so we should be good there.
Is the size about, size the same?
Um, yeah, last year was probably our biggest, maybe not ever, but in a long time. Because we did really well with the fundraising. The community really came through for us last year. And assuming that we continue, get that continued support, we should have a really, a pretty good sized parade again this year.
Who are your mayor candidates?
A girl named Cassie DeFries and Julie Miller Kirby.
Gotcha. Snow date, in case, like one year.
Um, the snow date?
Update?
Um.
In case between now and then?
If it's, well, in the, since I've been doing this for 19 years now, we've only had to postpone it twice.
Twice?
Uh, once because we had a nor'easter and it was predicted a few days in advance, so I was able to postpone it on the Friday before and reschedule. Most people came back the following Sunday.
Right.
And then, of course, two years ago, when we had the crazy amount of snow that we had, that there was no sidewalks for anybody to stand on, we postponed it out a month later, and we had it in April. So, you know, we have to wait till the time comes before we make that decision on canceling or, I should say, postponing. So.
Chief, any, anything to add on it?
No. Ed said he's worked closely for several years with Sergeant Gilmott. This year, we have instituted a couple new security measures, but there's nothing, nothing else up there.
Same parking, I mean, parking's the issue? Yep.
Same program as last year?
Yeah, everything went really well last year, and the chief was really good about helping us with our expenses, so that helps us, obviously. So that's a good thing.
Good. So we've got two, two points of discussion. One is to approve the date, and then the other, we'll talk about the administrative fee afterwards.
Motion?
Yeah.
I'll move to appoint a special permit, event permit for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 19th, 2017. The parade permit from 1:00 PM until 4:00 PM.
Second.
Great. Any other discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, three to zero? And then you've got the Chairman O'Toole staying. The second one, you've asked for a waiver for administrative fee for the, for the permit?
Not on the permit, on the details.
On the details, yeah.
On the police details.
So we, um, so the event has charged the hours of work for the police, that the police department puts in.
Right.
Looks like about 172 hours, is what they're estimating. I'm sure they, like you said, they...
Yeah. Well, based on last year, our fees, our bill from the town for police and fire and DPW was $778. I'm sorry, $7,780. So we had to pay a 10% fee to the town, administrative fee for that. So considering that the town basically gives us nothing as far as helping for, support for the parade, we're asking that maybe they, in the kindness of their heart, they could waive this fee for us to help us, you know, keep our costs down. And I do understand that, you know, you say, well, if you do this for you, you gotta do it for everybody, but the circumstances are different. Most of the other events that are, that require police details are for a profit organization or for a business or so. We're doing this for the town, so it's not like, you know, the money's not going to anybody else. The money's just helping to help us keep the parade going, so.
And it's a total of about $700 or $800?
Correct.
Seventy, $788.45. I think, I mean, that's the biggest stumbling block that is everyone that comes before us now for any event is going to ask for the same thing if we set a precedent for that. So, um, yes.
Nancy, this fee, this is on top of, this is just an, on top of, a 10% fee on top of all charges that the town, that gets paid to the town?
Yes, on the police details, it's 10% on top of the cost of the...
So no, it's the police get paid? No, it's our employees get paid for it, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And then the administrative fee on top of that, for processing it, scheduling it, mailing out the bills, collecting the funds, arranging for the details. So someone actually has to schedule all these details and get people to work, and they're not always necessarily town of Situate police officers.
See, I have a problem, and I'll tell you why. It's because I do see this, there's certain events here in town that are town events as a whole. This is one, Heritage Days is another. I certainly wouldn't say that we would reduce or deduct any of the fees that are being paid to any of the public employees who are actually working the event. But, you know, my feeling is that there are certain events, and this is one of them, that would classify that, you know, there is a kind of common partnership that we as a town work together on. And I just, I look at this and I think, you know, 10% fee? You know, why 10%? Well, you know, to do all that stuff, maybe it's 5%. And I just think throwing a number out there, it just seems to me a little arbitrary. And I know Tricia's not here, and I'll have that discussion whether, when she comes, even if she comes in later on, from her meeting with FEMA. But I just, for some reason, I just have a problem with this. I'm not talking about like if there was a road event that people were running, it's not really a large town event, but I just see this as being a town event that, you know, brings out people during the spring. And I kind of, you know, I liken it almost to like the Christmas stroll when, you know, Santa comes. That's another in my mind town event, or the holiday, Halloween event, where people go downtown and get together. I just have, I have an issue with it, and I just, again, I can point out some events and say, it's not really a town event, it's a specific special event for fundraiser. I just see this as a different, and I kind of feel that town should participate, at least in making this happen. I mean, I think when we had the boat come down last year, I don't know whether the town got charged a 10% administrative fee for the America's Cup, but to me, that was a town event, something unique, that there should be an exception to it. But that's just my, my take on it.
Nancy didn't outline a memo, just in her absence, to tell you, there is a memo from her to you, to the Selectman, about the 10% on the fee waived. Our thoughts on it, if you want to look at that.
And what about the Knights Columbus Carnival?
That's another one. That's another one, right? Say it's a town event where they bring it in.
But it goes right back to the scholarships over here.
I mean, that's kind of the point. Most events that we do in town, and I'm not against it by any means, they're for a good cause of some, some.
Right, right.
So Nancy, do we, do we charge us for, for everybody?
The only time that we don't charge administrative fee is if it's our own police detail, like internally. So if highway is using, is, you know, digging up the road for a culvert in Mass DOT, we can't charge it.
But every outside event that comes in, when, did that get implemented?
It's actually by statute. I was trying to look up the statute.
Yeah, she wrote it here, I think. But when did we implement it? Couple of years ago?
No. It's actually by statute that you charge administrative fee.
But is it optional? Can we waive it?
That's what I was trying to look up the statute for you to see if it's an optional thing, or if it's, you know, most people would not, not charge it because there is a cost to providing police details, especially with the scheduling of them.
Yeah. So, Sean, any, any thoughts on here?
Well, it sounds like we may not be able to waive it till we know. I mean, we can waive it and then may have to implement it.
I imagine we do have the flexibility to do it. All right. Any comments from the audience? All right. Why don't we, why don't we hold off on this until Nancy can find that out, and when Tricia comes here, we'll have a conversation with her?
Sure.
You have the event?
Yeah.
If we can...
If you can, you can. You can't if you are...
You know, I think Sean has some good points. There's some, some events that are really community oriented that I think we, the town should support. It's tough, I mean, we support it in little ways. I'm sure the police spend way more time than the ability for doing it, but, you know, we don't want to put a burden on the event either, so.
Right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Ed.
Wait for Chairman O'Toole to come back. But the next, the next event is the discussion of both the acceptance of a donation to the police department.
Good evening. How are you? Hello? Good. So about 10 months ago, back in April of 2016, Mr. Hale had come into the station, and we discussed a myriad of issues. One of those things was about traffic and something that we all do every day, which is driving a car. And how to improve on being able to teach inexperienced drivers, specifically new drivers just getting their license, how to acclimate them to, you know, real world driving, whether it be nighttime driving, you know, even something as simple as the glare of headlights coming into you, and just getting acclimated for that. So Mr. Hale had a few ideas that we had discussed, and I will give the floor to him and let you explain that.
All right. My name's William Hale. I own AJA International for 28 years up in North Situate. And I just wanted to, about in 2015...
Thank you.
In the fall of 2015, because I've been pre-lucky in life and the business has gone well, decided to set up a foundation in the name of my lovely dog Marley, who passed away, and specifically to help veterans, animals, and children. And we started off doing a scholarship program for the kids of Special Forces members, and last year we did 16 $5,000 scholarships. I've been tied in with the Navy SEALs in particular, down at Fort Pierce, and with the Army Unit Fund to do this. And I'm a high-tech guy. And so I see all the time kids getting in arcade games, and they love this stuff and video games. And here we have an opportunity to teach them situations. I'm a person who's driven cross-country 20 times. I was a cab driver when I was in college at BC in Boston, so I've done a lot of driving. And it's about situations. It's about, it's about having been there before and having seen it before so that your mind can react. We have this technology, and it's not all that expensive, and I approached the town regarding a simulator. I went out and took a look at one out in California, in Sacramento area, and was very impressed. The people were incredibly enthusiastic. They have quite a pedigree in terms of their customers, UPS, they're working with the Coast Guard in terms of a boat, a boat course, in terms of simulating the use of a boat. And I figured, okay, you know, I'm going to invest in it. So I bought one and had it shipped here, and I figured the best way to really see if it's any good is to buy it and try it. And Officer Billings tried it. I've had some of my young engineers and employees try it. They had no problem with it. I use it for 10 minutes, I'm ready to throw up. Okay? I get what's called SIM sickness, but the kids don't. And so I would like to work with the Situate Police Department through the Marley Foundation to provide the simulator. At the time I came in to talk, I also asked if there was anything else. And Officer Billings mentioned that you guys really needed a traffic trailer. Now, I'm a Hathaway member, and I go by that, that tool there all the time. And honestly, it slows me down every time, because I'm coming around that corner probably about 42. By the time I hit that sign, I'm doing 35. And if that can be put in key areas in town, it's going to help kids, it's going to help animals. All right? It's going to help. And I'm, I'm very happy to do both. And I just figured I'd come and tell you why I'm doing it. And we will probably be doing a number of other things along the lines of maybe more animals and children in addition to the veteran stuff that we're doing. But check out the website, I think you'll like it.
Wow. Really appreciate your generosity. That's, that's really incredible. I was speaking to Officer Billings and just explaining to me about the simulator. It sounds like a really, really intriguing thing. I think especially in the town of Situate, I think it's a really, it's a really, as far as like what you were saying about the flashing lights, the headlights, all that sort of stuff, on these country roads, you're experiencing a lot of that, so really, really appreciate it.
Well, I welcome any of you to come by my business up in North Situate, and it's a couple doors down, and we can set it up and try it. I don't think...
And we'll get sick too.
I don't think you'll do well. My wife has tried, my wife has tried it, she, she doesn't do well. All the young people seem to do just fine because they're used to it.
So how would the program actually work? Would people come to your facility? Is that...
No, with the traffic trailer, we would give it to the town. And what we would do is we would buy it, and we would loan it to the town for a year, and we would just want to see monthly documentation that it's going in places where it's going to help animals and children, because that's our charter. And I have to be true to our charter.
The trailer you're talking about?
Yeah. And I, and I think that will be very easy to justify, because pretty much every road would qualify. In the event, in the, in the case of the simulator, Officer Billings has mentioned that there's a place in the new station where he would keep it and administer it from there. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to bring the police, the parents, the kids in high school, bring them all together, doing something fun, positive, and you know, if it saves one kid's life or them running into somebody else or running over somebody's favorite dog, okay, it's, it's worth it. It's absolutely worth it.
A lot of, a lot of the stuff with the simulator, we'll be able to incorporate with our school resource officer to spread the war, spread the word next door, and anybody that wants to be able to come and use it can do that.
How easy is it to move it? In other words, Mr. Hale, thank you very much for donating to the town. I'll tell you, both these things are extremely helpful. I mean, the, the message board slash, you know, traffic, we can't have enough of those all over the town, so thank you. It's, that's a huge thing. But the driving simulator is really intriguing to me, because I'm thinking like, you know, whether bringing it to the high school for certain events, or bringing it to the, even the middle school, you know, the kids lay, you know, before they start, or down at certain events that we may have. I know I mentioned Heritage Days, but I'm like, if it can be moved or it's more kept in one location, I mean, just for certain occasions.
It's 300 pounds, but it's like a big wheelbarrow. I mean, you have a seat in it with wheel, steering wheel, there's a computer built into it, a 34-inch screen. It probably would not lend itself to being moved so regularly and easily. I've got a truck with my business with a lifting tailgate, so I can move it easily to wherever you want it. One of the other things that we would be more than happy to do, because we have resources along the lines of graphics and marketing, if say a flyer needs to be made up or something like that to go to parents, or a certificate needs to be printed up or something like that. I mean, we're, we're good for that, too. It's, it's all part of the effort. And I realize that by doing this, there is additional administrative burden put on the Situate police. Good stuff, and it's positive stuff, but there's, there's other little paper, you know, paper creating, flyers and things like that. We can do that at no cost to the town, so.
This is good.
This is, this is a tool, you can't, you can't measure how good something like this could be.
I think it'd be great.
I got my kids' four-wheelers when they were very little to drive them around my yards, the whole hand and eye coordination. Somehow, you know, Taylor, this will be a job for you. You need to somehow work with the SRO and see if you can't almost make it, almost mandatory that the kids from the school get over and use this.
Absolutely.
This tool.
And we'll be able to, we'll be able to incorporate our internship program as well, the school to career, that, you know, there's five or six students that come over.
Right along with you.
Come over to us, yeah. And we'll be able to incorporate them and also get the word spread.
This is just so valuable.
And if it gets used to the point where there's, people can't get time on it, I mean, we'll, we'll give you another one, okay? I mean, honestly, seriously, you, we want it to be used by the young people, seriously. If it saves one life, worth it, all worth it.
Thank you very, very much.
It'll definitely be used. I, I have a daughter that just got her license, another one that's about to get his next year, and we're nervous when they get out there because they're just not experienced.
Yeah.
And they need time behind a wheel in a safe situation, and that's, that's exactly what it seems like this will be.
No, this has got a virtual world of 50 square miles with off-road, city, suburban, parking lot, you name it. And it's, it's pretty realistic. These guys are creative California computer guys that put this together, so.
It's great.
Very excited about it. They, they were when they sold it.
Some headaches, too.
Yeah.
Driving in the parking lot at the MBTA, taking your life in your hands.
We might know a few adults that could use it.
Yeah.
Just a few.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hale, very much.
Appreciate you being receptive to it, you know?
Thank you very, very much.
Happy to help.
Will the Board of Selectmen accept a donation of a virtual interactive driving simulator and traffic safety radar trailer and message board to the Situate Police Department from Mr. William Hale, President of the Marley Foundation of Situate, Massachusetts?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vignani, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hale, I'm going to try.
Yeah, well, you need to get...
I'm going to try.
Absolutely.
Take some Germanine and take a try.
Right.
Moving on, we have 7:25, DPW contacts, Mr. Kevin Cafferty and Sean McCarty as well.
Well, that's great, and it's good to hear the radar sign's working also that we have down there in Gannett.
And I'll tell you, it, it, it does work. I'm going to mention that to Taylor, but in the morning, early, they don't care. They're coming out of mine and they're flying.
The one on Gannett?
Yeah.
I got a, I got a question for you, Kevin. How much is, how much was the sign on Gannett? Is that like $10,000?
It was about $6,500 all in. $6,500 to $7,500, and that was put in two years ago, so the price might have gone up a little bit.
You know, I know that we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten to your budget, but I like, I honestly think we should think about, once a year, putting $6,500 aside and putting another one of those up, various throughout the town.
Jericho Road.
You know, you look at like, after 10 years, you end up with 10 of them all around. It will slow people down, it does. Mr. Hale's right. I, I hit that corner sometimes, and I'm like, oh, you're right, I'm going over the speed limit, I'll slow down.
I thought they were more than...
And that's, I think there's two. There's one over there.
We have two on Countryway also.
I thought they were more than 65.
On the side of Branch Street and Countryway.
Yeah.
You're right, I know what you're talking about. But I'm like, I just think that's something that we should think about trying to implement on a yearly basis, just putting another one up, putting another one up so people know it.
In 65, it, it might be a little more mighty if the prices have gone up since then. It was two years ago since we did it.
For some reason, I thought they were about 13,000 or 14,000 for each.
And just so you know, those people are going to speed, are going to speed. It's, it's the other ones who you're going to slow down.
The solo was about 65.
Eight.
Come on, there's 5,000 people watching us, they can't hear us.
Sorry.
Okay.
The first one, we went out to bid for the next phase of the water project. We received nine bids. The lowest responsible bidder was C Norton Corporation from Bridgewater, Mass. That includes doing water replacement on 123, which basically crosses 3A up the road and up to the Norwell Town Line, ties into Norwell. We actually go into Norwell by about a few hundred feet so that we can turn down Neilgate because our water line loops down in that section there. We have Common Street, we've got a section of Tilden Road, we've got a section of Countryway, section of Mordecai Lincoln, Old Gannett Road, Damon Lane, Buttonwood Lane, and Cherry Lane. And then we're doing service connection, switchovers on Grove Street, a section of Hathaway, and Grasshopper.
That's going to be a difficult one, huh?
It'll, it'll be very difficult. And we'll re...
Try and plan it so you can keep Neilgate open, so that that can be sort of a cut through?
What we'll do is we'll reroute, so the traffic goes down Neilgate and goes around. We'll have message boards, and we have a whole approved traffic plan that we've submitted through District 5 with, with the state highway and get that all approved, so we'll be following that through.
Is that our details? Would that be our, that'd be our details, man?
They, I, I think when we cross 3A, we have to call for the state first, and then, and then it goes back. They wind up using the Situate Police usually.
I just had a question, so I had asked, Kevin, you know, I was a little concerned about digging up more roads, and so Kevin explained to me, so Kevin, this will be probably the only one we'll do next year?
This is the only one we're going to do next year, but we will continue. We had one project we did last year, and that was by CJP. We did quite a few streets, but we weren't able to charge up the lines because of the drought. So we're hoping in the beginning of the year to charge up the lines and start switching the services over and deactivating them, but we've done a lot of the, the mainline work already. There are a couple small areas where we have some small sections of pipe on that project, but we've done most of it.
So how much will this accomplish on that?
When we're done with this project...
By itself, I mean?
Well, how many miles?
Yeah.
On this project?
I'm trying to pull up.
Let me see.[1583.23] of the year to charge up the lines and start switching the services over and deactivating them. But we've done a lot of the, the mainline work already. There are a couple small areas where we have some small sections of pipe on that project, but we've done most of it.
So how much will this accomplish on that?
When we're done with this project.
By itself, I mean?
Well, how many miles?
Yeah.
On this project?
I'm trying to pull up.
Let me see. Is that handy?
Three miles, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a little over.
2.6.
It's 2.6 miles.
Kevin, tell me where it's going again?
Yeah, actually, we got a map on the wall, too. Do you see the dark pink lines? The heavier, thicker pink lines? That's where this project is.
Get a map.
Oh, shoot. And it is. I got it right here. It's going down 123, it's going down a section of Common Street, Tilden Road, a section of Countryway, near the tracks by Mordecai Lincoln, on Mordecai Lincoln Road, Old Gannett Road, Damon Lane, Buttonwood Lane, and Cherry Lane.
Mordecai Lincoln, that's not the section you just repaved, is it?
No.
No.
Thank God.
As well as-
So, what about Corner at Stetson? Obviously, it's a heavily traversed road, 123, it's kind of gonna be broken up. You're gonna have a trench. What are we doing as far as paving? Because it will turn into a nightmare and we're gonna hear nothing but complaints once it's done. So what's the plan?
The plan is, we're gonna look at it two ways. Typically, on these projects, we pave every Friday on a section going down 123, and we may pave at the end of every day and, and just maintain the trench as it goes and continue working along.
You go curb to curb?
Hmm?
Are you going-
Just the trench. And then eventually, we go curb to curb after everything's all squared away and everything's complete.
Didn't we change it? Didn't we ask that not to happen anymore? Because the trenches were-
Trenches only half the road, not even half the road, right?
Four feet.
Depends on what road you're on, really.
Right.
But that's, that was the whole problem going up Countryway. You know, I thought we, I thought Sean actually brought it up that all future ones were gonna go curb to curb, so that we didn't have-
No, in the end, we are gonna go curb to curb, but we, we put the line in, the main line in, then we come back and do the services and everything else.
Right, we wait the year for it to settle?
We, we would probably do it at the end of the season or, or in the spring, depending on how things hold up and when the water job's complete.
Which is why I'm raising it now. In other words, I would think that Corner at Stetson, because it's so heavily traversed, that that road would get curb to curb before the end of the year, because otherwise, the winter's gonna create with assault.
Ideal situation, I agree with you 100%. We will work it so that we can get that work done and hopefully get it all paved edge to edge by the end of the year. That would be our, that would be our hope.
I'm only saying it because that's the heavily, that's out of all roads, that's probably the one that's gonna be used the most.
And we hear it the most when something, when it is bad. So we're very aware of it. We brought the contractor in last Friday and had a conversation with them about that. They seem very reasonable, they're willing to work with us on it, on, on getting it done as, you know, as we need it. We're in a tricky situation because the Inlee School's up there. We don't wanna shut down the school traffic. We're probably gonna do it after school's out at the Inlee, and then we still have two nurseries that are there also that, you know, are busy too. So it's, it's gonna be tricky. We've looked into it a lot and we'll work with everybody to do it in the, in the best manner possible. It's not something we're dying, you know, it's, it's a tough one.
I'm only saying, Kevin, because I just know the rest of the roads are kind of like third, you know, not secondary, but almost like your third type of streets. But I'm like, that being a main intersection, a main road, I just don't wanna have the arguments a year from now in the winter, people complaining because there's suspension or tires.
No, and, and we understand that 100%, and that would be our plan if, if all works out well and we get in and out of there to get it all done.
And is there anything at the rotary that's being done?
We are going to cross at the rotary also. We're gonna cross 3A, too.
You're gonna-
Go all the way down.
Are they gonna tunnel under it or are they gonna excavate the surface?
We're gonna excavate the surface.
Did you look at tunneling under?
We did. We looked at all options. And what we did is we came up in the area where we'd minimize crossing 3A, just similar to where we crossed it right out front here. We'd do something to that section. We're not going straight across the rotary. We're gonna go around on the backside and get that set up. That rotary line is, is over 100 years old, the, the line that's underneath the rotary now. We've had two breaks in it in the past two years.
I don't doubt that, but-
It probably should've been done when the rotary was done, the line replaced.
So, so you're coming down 123?
Mm-hmm.
You hit the rotary, and where are you going?
We veer off to the left. We veer off to the left if you're coming down 123 and swing down and cross at that section, at a section closer to the treatment plant and run it across and then swing it around, back over. And actually, we're crossing where the, where that grist mill is, we're gonna cross on the edge of the bridge and have a piece of pipe suspended along that side instead of going under the culvert and have that insulated. We'll be part of the plan also.
And then, where does it stop? Right there?
Well, we replace the line right up, right up to the culvert, pretty much, and it would tie into where that, where that broke off.
Right on the other side of-
On the other side.
By the grist mill, is where it's ending?
Kevin, just a quick question.
When's that gonna happen? What, sorry?
We're gonna work with the residents there and we'll work with the Inlee School so that we have the least impact to everybody.
The spring, the summer?
We're probably gonna wait till school's out for that, from the Inlee, and, and probably do that. I'd say the summer.
Oh, I mean, summer, July, August.
And that way, we get time for things to settle down. We'll talk to the Inlee, maybe it's something we can do and do part of it, and we'll work with the contractor on it. We haven't, obviously, we haven't awarded the contract yet, so I don't have a schedule yet from the contractor on when they wanna go, but they're willing to accommodate the neighbors and, and us in getting that work done.
So, two-part question. So, the areas that aren't tied in yet, there's, there's quite a few, right, where we didn't tie in due to the drought?
Yes.
So, those are, you're gonna have to dig up that portion where you're gonna make the connection, right?
We would go, we'll go from the edge of the roadway-
Yeah.
-to the main. We have to dig that portion up and then we-
So then you're gonna do the initial packing and all that, and then you're gonna have to wait, what?
We'll, we'll wait a little bit on those, but the main line should've been settled out by now, and hopefully, we can get those paved sooner and get them paved in the fall.
And that, that's, does that happen with a different contractor, is that?
That's a different contractor.
That's happened simultaneously or early?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. We like to keep busy in that way.
Yeah, guess.
Two thoughts, Kevin. On 123, to, to Tony's point, can we backfill with processed material and then compact it, and then it could be, you know, a final paving job? That's what I was getting at. If we just backfill with the material we take out of the road, that's why it's gonna settle. But if we have them, I don't know how, I didn't see the contract how it was written. If they, like CJP had a crushing plan, so if they bring it to a yacht, a stage-
It would, it would be something very similar to that, that, that has to be a decent gravel. It can't be just the gravel that's there.
To John and Tony's point, then it could be backfilled if they have a big enough machine to, to compact it, and then it could be resurfaced, and it's not gonna settle if it's done.
Potentially.
All right.
Potentially. I'd, I'd love to say yes, but I know it still settles around the pipe, even if you put a really big compactor on it.
Flowable fill.
They don't like to put flowable fill because it increases the pH around the pipe, which causes an acidic reaction on the pipe itself, even though we bag it. So, and then the problem is it, it-
Becomes like concrete.
Yeah.
What about, last meeting, we had a presentation about Hunter's Pond. So, Mordecai Lincoln, you're gonna go over that archway bridge and they're gonna, my short-term memory is failing already. But, you know, the project they're gonna do on that pond, turn it back into a stream and a ladder and all that, just be aware, guys, that's all, you know?
Oh, no, we incorporate, we incorporate, there's gonna be a new water line that crosses that also.
Okay.
That's part of the project, it's gonna be tied in.
Exposed like the one you're talking about in Green Bush, or will it be underground?
That will be, I believe that one's underground, isn't it? Yeah.
It's underwater now.
It's underwater now. It's an old pipe, but I believe it's gonna be underwater when it's all said and done.
Just make sure we're on the same page as that project.
Yep, we've been, we've been working with them.
All right.
And getting that straight away.
Thanks.
Okay.
How is it exposed at Green Bush? When you said that by the grist mill?
It'll be exposed on the end, edit, end of that culvert, and it'll be insulated.
The end of the culvert?
There's a culvert that goes underneath the Countryway.
It'll come up out of the ground.
It'll come up out of the ground, go over, go down the side, and then go down, instead of going underneath the river, the stream there.
So, under the road, though, right?
It's off to the right on the side of the road. It'll be suspended and hung.
Okay. Isn't there one on Drifway?
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, there is.
Go by, and then you don't even notice it.
Right by the burger?
Right.
One on the exactly.
Right, right, right. C Street, yeah.
Okay.
So, it, it will be a challenging job, no doubt. 123 and traffic will be-
Bad enough without construction.
Is this it afterwards? This is the final phase?
The biggest main section that we have left is Oceanside Drive. We have about 3,900 feet on Oceanside Drive that needs to be replaced.
Waiting for the walls to get done.
But we wanna do the seawalls first, and we have some miscellaneous stuff. A lot of the other stuff is where we have two pipes going down the street.
Yeah.
And just similar to what we did on Kent Street, where we have to take the services off the old pipe and put them on the, on the newer pipe from the '60s. So.
I move the Board of Selectmen to award the contract for Phase 3B of the Water Main Rehabilitation Project to C Norton Corporation of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, for an amount not to exceed $3,306,483.40.
Second? Second, Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Kevin, before we get off water, have you, have you noticed the amount of brown water complaints decreasing?
Significantly, yes. We were talking to the water department about it, and they've even noticed the, the purchasing less red be gone also, which typically, they bought a lot more cases. We have had a lot less complaints with the brown water. It was trying this year with the drought because we couldn't flush. Usually, if we have a brown water area, we'll go out and we'll open the hydrants and flush it all out and get it out of the system. But where we really didn't have a lot of excess water, we, we weren't able to do that this year. So it was kind of a tough year to judge, but I always use the Millwaf because anytime we had brown water, the Millwaf or, or any of the fish stores or anything, we'd hear it because it'd get into their ice machines. And last year, we didn't hear any complaints. So, you know, that was-
That's good.
Good, you know what I mean? It's, it's in-
In the right direction.
I think. So it's going in the right direction.
Jenkins School?
On Jenkins School.
Jenkins School.
Jenkins School, it's an accessibility improvement contract?
Yep, we went out to bid. We had that ramp designed, construction documents, specifications prepared for, to make that handicap accessible. We opened bids for the project, and our lowest responsible bidder is Dandell Construction from Hanson, Mass. for $94,655.
What's it gonna look like? There were a bunch of different plans that were, is it zigzagging or is it?
It'll pretty much follow the same path you see now, only meeting ADA slope requirements with landings periodically.
So it's not gonna have to go like this? It's gonna go-
It will at the street. Once you get down to First Parish Road, it will have to zigzag back and forth due to the steepness right at the edge of the roadway. So that's where you'll get that back and forth once.
And what, what's the material?
Concrete.
Yes.
Why? What was the reason we couldn't go straight across instead of doing that? What was the reasoning behind that?
Just the grading. It was too steep on the road.
That's what I thought, because I just got a, okay. Thank you.
On a motion?
Please.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract to provide construction services for accessibility improvements at the Jenkins School Elementary School to Dandell Construction of Hanson, Mass. for $94,655?
Second?
Second, Mr. Danahue, further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I love stinks, I wasn't here for the discussion.
You didn't vote on it. It's the pa, you were here initially.
Just to refresh everyone's memory, this is the, the access down the backside of Jenkins to First Parish that is not handicap accessible. It's too steep.
And our plan on that is, we, we have met with the contractor. He asked if he could try to stop it from being able to vacation. We're gonna push it off till school gets out and let them come out and knock the whole thing out all at once and try to get it set up that way. I don't wanna, I, we wanna try to avoid having it going while school's in session.
Sean, are there railings on each side?
Yep.
On both sides?
Correct.
Next, moving on to Engineering Design Services Contract?
The next one, I'm sorry, we have well 17A, which is off Tac Factory Pond Road, and this was for the implementation of a future green sand filter. This well was shut down back a few years ago. It's a fairly high productive well. It was shut down for the manganese and iron that was being produced from that well. The green sand filter will remove the, the iron in manganese and allow us to go directly into the system in the future. So this is just for engineering, test pilot studies, and some other stuff to, to get it going.
As far as the treatment system itself, what is, roughly, what is, what are we looking at for that?
Could be as high as $5 million. It, it varies. It could require a whole building with a filtration system. We'll know more as we do the test filters and do the pilot study to the extent of what needs to be done for the building, or, or what needs to be done for the filtration system.
That question.
So this is a, one, a well that we had taken offline. Is it connected or was it connected at one point, Kevin?
It was, it was connected, and when they built the Tac Factory Pond Neighborhood, it created a lot of brown water.
That's what he was saying.
Because it was putting it out. We still use that well. That is the well that goes into the pond. If you remember, when we were doing our water updates, we were able to pump the water to the pond and then use that through the reservoir. But it's a very productive well. If we were able to get, get that water clean and get it directly into the system, it'd be a big boost for our system.
So would we look to design something on site?
It'd be right on site. It'd be a set plant on site. And what they do is, it's a, it's a green sand, and it'd probably be a whole other filter building that the water would run through and remove all the, the metals.
And then put it into the system?
And it would go directly into the system.
The water, into the water, to water treatment. Wow, great.
And I think that the productivity on that well, I think is between 250 to 300 gallons per minute.
Wow.
So it's a, it's a significant well.
Well, worth it, then. I mean, yeah.
So this is step one.
I move the Board of Selectmen to award the contract for providing engineering and design services for the green sand pilot treatability study and design development staged drawings for well number 17A to tie and bond of Pocasset, Mass. for $95,100.
Second? Second, Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks.
Very good.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote on an amendment to the Boatworks lease of Stephen Moan, the harbor master. Stephen, come on up.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
How's everybody this evening?
Tell us a little bit about this, if you would.
The, the end of last spring, beginning of the summer, I went out and with, with Walter Ferrier, the wiring inspector, and with one of the fire lieutenants to assess all the marinas for the electrical systems and fire extinguishers and so on. We came across the Situate Maritime Center electric shed, and this was damaged during Hurricane Juno. We were initially going to just replace the system that was in place. And while I was there, I ran into Brian, and Brian said, you know, that he was interested in erecting a shed on the property. He had gone to Mark Patterson in the past.
Correct.
And they had some discussions about it. Brian, at that point, said, if you're doing the electric system, you'd like, if I can have, put the shed here, I'd be more than happy to have you move your whole electric system up out of that lower area and put it up into higher ground. So if we have another storm like Juno or worse, we're up higher out and our whole system doesn't appear a place to go. So we went to, Neil dug in, Neil came down and met with myself, Walter, Brian, and I think Bob was there as well, the building department. And we had discussions. At that point, Neil thought it was a great idea. He went to Tricia. Tricia and Nancy spoke to see if it was in the lease, if this was a viable option. And they went through the planning boards and all the different boards, got all the proper permits. And we're here before you now to amend the lease with this information.
So it's, it's, it's not just for electrical? It looks like there's a snack shed and small ice, is that what?
That's what, he's going to be, right now, he sells some of his, some, how do you word it?
Basically, I'm just gonna take a little part of the ship store and bring it down.
So where is this? I mean, I've got the Maritime Center, I know exactly where that is, and then you got the building where you're-
There's a shed there right now. If you, do you know where the travel lift is?
Yes.
In between the travel lift and the Maritime Center, there's a shed that's been there since I, I started operating there. That is what, it floods there.
Okay.
So we're just gonna move it up and back onto where my, you know, where I work on the boats, just about 20, 25 feet back.
Okay.
So in there, we would then, you know, continue to-
Hold on, I just wanna see, put it in context, that's all.
And just so you can say who you are, what's your name?
Brian Carreri, Citrovo Works.
And Brian, while he's looking for that, can you tell us a little bit what you're planning on doing there?
Okay, so it's just gonna be an extension of our store that we already currently have on there, just kind of closer to the marina, selling the same sort of items, hourly lines, fenders, toilet paper, toothpaste.
Okay.
You know, stuff for the, for the marina. I'd like to possibly, you know, look into, you know, having kayak rentals out of there or, you know, small boat rentals out of there, see how it goes. Not day one, but, you know, just have that as an option.
What size shed, dimensions?
10 by 14, 12 by 14. It's, it's small.
And they have photos of the shed and the layout as well.
It's floating.
Thank you.
See, it's floating. Are there pylons?
No, those are sonnets because it's temporary structure.
This will also help if we have an electrical issue. We are, right now, we have a pinnon sleeve conductors that come from C dock that go up underneath the Maritime Center today and are connected through the Maritime Center. B dock goes to the shed on one side. A dock has two conductors coming off of A dock. One goes to one side of the shed, the other one goes to the other side of the shed. And if the, if the fire department or if we needed to shut the system down right away, we're running around trying to find all these disconnects. My proposal is to, along the railing of the travel lift, we have A, B, or A and A, B and C, so there's the four disconnects. And eventually, there'll be a shunter breaker that's GFCI protected, and that's in the future. So that you can just come down, either pull the disconnects or just press the button. Button will be in the future.
Go ahead, Tony.
So just looking at this, so there's only going to be an electrical panel in here?
There's going to be a meter on the outside of the building.
Right.
And then there'll be an electric panel inside the building with the breakers. And then out of that will be the PVC that's going to run along the railing to the disconnects.
And we're, we have this huge shed here right now, and it's only going to take up about a panel in the new place?
Yeah, the current panel that's in that shed is only a...
Four hundred amp service.
Yeah, four feet high, three feet wide.
What else goes on in this shed that you're going to take down?
Nothing.
Empty shed.
It's an empty shed.
Your shed with the panel in it?
We're going to be removing that. That was, I think Conservation wanted the shed removed as well. So I'm hoping that if we have time at the end, when we put the docks in, if we have additional time to pick it up with a crane and put it on some sort of ramp truck and maybe bring it to...
Save it.
We'll bring it down to the transfer station and slide it off until the town can figure out what to do with it, whether they use it somewhere else. Because it is a nice, you know, it's a nice shed.
So you're, it looks like you're selling ice cream and, so you're going to have like a sliding window, is that...
Yeah, it's not something where people would come in and shop around there. It'd just be, you know, a high school, yeah, classic snack shack with a sliding door, and they would just hand it out the door.
Right, and it's a, I see it's wheelchair accessible?
Yep.
But it's prepackaged?
Yeah, all prepackaged.
Everything's prepackaged. There's not, so...
How do you, so you'd have to still go into your store to get the other stuff?
The...
Don't you sell other stuff?
Yeah, we currently have a store on site that would, is larger than this. So this is just something that, you know, just to help kind of the...
So there's still going to be that other...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
...accessories, but this will just be for snacks and...
You run it by health department as well?
Correct, yeah.
I thought, as long as the electrical inspectors onboard, well, that sounds like it's going to be an upgrade.
And this is basically for marina patrons, not for people coming in from wherever to shop at this.
Yes, they're not going to drive down there to get an ice cream sandwich.
No, no.
That's not what it's for.
No, no.
For the marina.
So who's going to pay for all of it?
We have funds for the electric system through Hurricane Juneau.
And the construct, every, everything else, I'm going to be paying for.
The removal of the shed as well?
No, not the removal, but the construction.
So we have to remove it and rewire it to, you're going to build the shed that you're going to use?
Correct.
And you're going to house the electrical panel?
And we have the funds through Hurricane Juneau, Hurricane Juneau account to put in a new electric system that needs to be replaced anyways. It's just, instead of replacing it here, we're replacing it there and moving a few other things around to better organize the system.
Do we have those bids already, Steven?
I do, yes. So I have a labor bid and we're putting out the material bid separately, to try to save as much money as we possibly can on this project.
It looks like we're within range of what the money we have available?
So we're now being in a pretty big shed for...
We're waiting for them to do it so that they can actually...
Gotcha, okay.
I've not seen any issues with it.
No?
We're just looking at a map right now. So you're going to move it, there's like a little shed that you have, I'm sorry, I'll go there. And then you have the big building in the back.
Yep.
So is it attached to the little building in front of it?
No, the little building that's right next to the larger building houses all my power washing equipment to, you know, to help with.
So it's going to actually attach to your bigger...
If I could...
Here's another, there's your building, there's your power washing.
I have the Google. That's what I'm just looking at here. So here's your big building.
Yeah, see that building right there?
Yeah, that's it.
It's just going to go right where that little building is.
Right up higher.
Oh, it's not going to attach to the other?
You're going to put it in the...
It's just going to go right there.
So it's freestanding?
Freestanding.
Gotcha, okay.
I thought it was attached.
It's going to go this way. Push it off there.
Okay. It's only moving about twenty feet back, freestanding on its own.
Any more questions? You got anything?
Is there any other changes to the lease? I assume...
No, it's just that you would, since this is a different use for the selling of the snacks, that you would allow that use. We would still retain, in the lease, we still get a portion of those proceeds. Three percent, right?
Correct.
All right, good. You want a motion?
Please.
I'll move the board of selectmen amend the lease agreement between the town of Situate and Situate Boat Works, authorizing the construction of a small ice and snack shed at the head of the pier at the leasees' expense. A portion of said structure shall be made available to the town for the term of this lease for housing of electrical services related to the Situate Marine Park. Maintenance, operation, access, and usage of the new structure will be subject to the same terms and conditions as stated in the current lease agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
For the summer?
Yes.
Great, good luck.
It's got to be before May fifteenth. I need that electricity.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Your time. Thanks.
Have a good night.
Moving on to some operating and capital budget overviews. The first one's going to be inspections and ZBA. It's two forty-one and one seventy-six. Bobby, you can get for that one? Please, come on in. How you doing, Bob?
Good to see you all. Good evening. Of course, you know, it's my first time doing this, so...
You'll go, really?
You'll be gentle and I'll be as globular, as communicative as possible, believe me.
So the ZBA looks... No significant changes?
No, the ZBA is pretty much level funded, except for a step increase for the ZBA secretary, which is small.
Sure.
But included in the budget. Expenses for postage, small amount for subscriptions, and office supplies, pretty, pretty consistent from last year to the proposed FY eighteen.
No new people?
No.
Time?
We've had a change of chairman.
Who's the new chair?
The new chair is...
John Allen.
Thank you, John Allen. Sarah Trezese has stepped, stepped down. So that seems to be going very well. John's been in the chairman's position now for the past several meetings.
You see, the revenue is projected down, I guess, from last year. It's at one sixty-two now. This is the building department revenue.
Oh, you're an inspection, huh?
Yep.
At forty-one.
We're doing two forty-one?
One seventy-six, I think.
Seventy-six and then two forty-one.
We're doing one seventy-six first?
Yes.
And are you there?
No, this is in two forty-one.
Yeah, zoning is basically just...
It's twenty-two thousand dollars and it's, yeah, the same for the last few years.
Seven hundred dollars difference.
I think we're tracking quite well the, remembering that the year-to-date revenue only goes through the first part of December. So it's approximately five-twelve of the total projected revenue. So I think we'll be fairly close to, perhaps not sixteen, which was a real banner year, but certainly close to, close to fifteen.
What do we budget, Nancy Portman, for the revenue? For seventeen?
For seventeen, there was a one question, and I will tell you.
It does look like it's dropping off, though.
I think we've been a little slower than we anticipated. Some of the projects, for instance, the Goldston property, have lagged a little bit.
Right.
But there are others coming online. We didn't realize we were going to have the potential development at the MBTA site in Green Bush, which now is beginning to get a little bit more real. So I think, you know, things will fall into place.
Right.
It's just they've lagged somewhat from our original timeline.
So seventeen was three eleven nine third, three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty. Department request is three oh eight six fifteen. Town administrator's request is higher.
This reflects a couple of changes in status within the department. One of, one of which is fairly obvious, and I know you're all aware of it, that Neil Duggan, after twenty-two years, stepped down early in July, or stepped aside, I should say, not stepped down. Very fortunately for me and the department, he is still onboard two days a week, doing nineteen hours on a part-time basis and at an hourly rate. I've stepped into his position and am acting building commissioner. I am working towards the exams necessary to get me certified in that position, so that's part of what's happening right now. We have also, for FY eighteen, discontinued services of a part-time secretary, Benzy Simone, who was coming in, I think, approximately ten hours a week and will not be doing so. So that drops our overall salary requirement, departmental salary requirement, department-wide. The reason that it's raised is to take that drop and augment it slightly in order to create a fund to hire a new position. And I think Tricia can inform you more of the exact parameters and status of that position, but it would be a Director of Community Planning and Development, who would be an overseer, if you will, or overview not only our department, but planning the Conservation Commission and that, that sort of thing, the, also the building, building development and also business development, excuse me. That's, that's kind of a position that doesn't exist now that's being funded in this way.
So I'm happy to answer any questions directly related to that position and how we're funding it. But as Bob mentioned, his budget is actually down, save for steps for Encolis for the staff. In the packet, I mean, in your budget, in addition to an extensive discussion in the FY eighteen recommended budget message, there is justification for the position and the job description. We also have detailed comparable data analysis from over fifty communities. One of the things I do want to stress, stress is that this is a revenue-neutral position right now. It's being recommended at sixty-five thousand dollars, which means it would start three months after the beginning of the fiscal year. That's achieved by two things that Bob already said, by a eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-four pickup in salary for, due to Neil's retirement, the elimination of the third clerk in that department at nine thousand dollars. They had an extra clerk in addition to their two full-time for ten hours a week, and that was a nine thousand dollar pickup. And then a transfer of the current Economic Development Commission budget from their FY seventeen budget of forty-nine, forty-four thousand to also pay for this salary. It's not revenue from the town, taking away from other services. We made a very determined decision to make it revenue-neutral. And I think, as I said, I went into great detail in the budget message about what I strongly believe is the need for this position. It had to sit somewhere, and so it makes more sense to have it sit in the building department, even though this position will oversee conservation, planning, and the building department. And also be charged, to a large extent, with implementing our economic development initiatives that the EDC has done such a great job with the last few years. I have met with the Chair of the EDC. I have been in contact with the Chair of the Conservation Commission. I won't speak for the Chair of EDC, but it's my understanding they're both in favor of it. And I'm scheduled to go to the planning board meeting Thursday night to discuss the position.
Tricia, is the sixty-five thousand dollars a nine-month salary?
Nine-twenty, yep.
So that's nine, and how are we going to fund it in year two?
That will be my challenge.
Well, we've talked about this for years in our, you know, in our annual goals and think that this is a position that is needed to advance our, you know, our causes in a big-picture way. So I, I think there's a need for the position.
And it would require a separate warrant article at town meeting, because we're changing the administrative code of the town, because that will take three direct reports to me and place them in, under the Director of Community Development and Planning, Building Commissioner, Town Planner, and...
Conservation.
Conservation. And that was recommended in the DOI report that the town had in two thousand and fifteen.
So how does the pay go down when we're also paying Neil?
Neil's only working twenty hours a week.
Still?
We had two full-time.
Okay, so...
Bob was full-time and Neil was full-time.
Previously right, we were both full-time.
Okay.
Right, and so Neil went to part-time and Bob went to full-time, but there was also a delta between Neil's salary and Bob's salary.
And how was the twenty that we picked up?
Yep, yep.
Relevant to your question as to the building department at the building fees, the building permits are, were estimated at three hundred and twenty thousand for fiscal seventeen, and we have already collected two hundred and thirty-eight thousand year-ago. So we will make a prediction without problem.
Yeah, we actually augmented that a little from the forecast meeting in December?
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with Tony. I think there's a great need for a Director of Community Development planning to oversee with so much going on and so many plans before us, so I support the addition of the position as well.
So what's the title? Director of Planning and Development or Director of Community Planning and Development?
It's Director of Planning and Development.
Just want to make sure.
It's amazing how many titles and permutations there are out there, and that was the one I arrived at after looking, like I said, at over fifty. So, and I don't want, I mean, community you could use, but, you know, I didn't want that not to focus on the economic part, so I thought it was safer to just keep it generic.
Yeah, it says community in the, in the budget, but...
In the job description, I think it just says Planning and Development, but maybe that's a...
So there's going to be obviously concern about us putting another layer of government in what's going on. But in this case, in order for us to get things done, you know, we've got so many worker bees doing so much that I think we have trouble picking our head up to see where we're headed in the right direction and whether we're hitting initiatives that we want to do. So how many new positions do we have in this budget?
Just this one and a point four custodian.
Right, so this is the only, I knew the answer.
Yeah.
This is the only new position that we have here, and it's in an area, John, you've been talking about this for ten years or so.
Sean, I remember, we were talking about ten. I remember Rick Murray, he and I were talking about it. I mean, this is something the town needs to, to really seriously consider. It's, it's a very important position. We always talk about, people talk about development on three A, and why don't we have business? Why don't we expand the business districts? Why don't we have sewage up in North Situate? Why don't we have this plan? How about the beach? How about that? The reality is, and you know, you take the Economic Development Committee, you have a bunch of volunteers, people who donate their time, but they also have a real job. And they work forty-plus hours a week trying to put stuff together. And what it does is it kind of slows the process down. Here we have somebody who's going to be spot-on responsible for taking a look at all these plans, beginning to implement them. When you talk about a forty B, you talk about the over, the village overlay districts and all their business districts, when you start thinking out loud and saying, this is what we as a town want to go forward, we have a vision, we have the carrot, so that when the developers or the contractors come into town and say, I want to build this, that person can come in and say, guess what? This is what the town wants. This is what we're looking for. This is the, the vision. And this is what the people want. So you work with us and we actually hammer it out and we get it done, as opposed to, you know, kind of an ad hoc approach to different things. It also brings in the historical context, it brings into trying to preserve certain aspects. So I think, you know, from a town perspective, going forward into the twenty-first century and trying to maintain a lot of these structures and a vision and the uniqueness of Situate for all residents, those who've been here and those people who've moved in, I think it's incumbent upon us to put a position in. And, you know, there will be the naysayers saying, oh, you're creating more of a hierarchy and a pyramid here. No, this is a new position that frankly is going to be, through attrition, taking on a lot more responsibilities and getting a lot done for the town that people complain about, why this isn't happening and that's not happening. So this is a really good position. I hope people support it. And if they have questions, you know, reasonable questions, I think we are prepared, well, we'll, we'll answer them, you know, and hopefully the town will get behind it, because it's a good thing.
Any of our neighboring towns have them, or, you know, through all your networking of other TAs and so forth, have you had discussions with them, Tricia?
Not so much more comparable towns to our size and our type of... Not so much more comparable towns to our size and our type of development. I mean, one of the things we've talked about is we have more and more marginal pieces of land left. We have increasingly increased pressure on that land to be developed. We have probably between six and 12 reports on coastal mitigation, sea rise, zoning overlay districts, zoning review, MAP studies. And, you know, our staff does a great job, but they sometimes work in silos, and we need someone to have a big picture, to sort of be the orchestra for these musicians, and also to be able to implement all this great research and all these studies that we've had in terms of building the business climate, looking at the visioning, and have someone whose primary focus is that instead of doing it after they're doing the essential functions of their job every day. So I think it's needed, and I hope it's supported.
The reason I ask is, do you think there'll be a fair amount of applicants? I could see a lot of kids coming out of college with this type of background.
So we're looking for someone fairly experienced with ACIP certification, which means a planning background, because we would be looking for someone who has development experience and has demonstrated success in sort of, both from a residential but also commercial economic base. I think it will attract a lot of people, so, but, you know, we'll have to see.
Nope.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Ann.
Ann Burbine, Tenpenny Chris Road, Chairman, Economic Development Commission. I know my budget's on this evening. I could not agree with Tricia more. This is a necessary position. I remember talking with Mr. Danke, when you first came on the board, I think you were even still on ZBA, about this position. And one of the things that I have seen over the umpteen years that I have been involved, too many things fall through the cracks. We don't talk to each other. And things get sort of put aside. I've been involved in a lot of studies that have ended up on the shelf. We need a coordinated effort to ensure that whatever it is or wherever we're going, we know, we have a plan and we know how to get there. And somebody needs to be in charge. I don't see it as another level of bureaucracy. I see it as common sense, that finally we will have someone that will be able to coordinate zoning, building, planning, economic development, commercial, et cetera, to make this town what for years we have wanted it to be. It doesn't mean overdeveloping it, it doesn't mean any of those things. It just means common sense will finally rule the building. And again, I could not support this more.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Look forward to being here next year. Also want to say that Neil's shoes are not fillable necessarily, and we'll do the best we can, and I think we're doing all right. I've got a really good crew to lean on, so I think things are going to work.
Thanks, Bob. We'll have you answer the questions at town meeting.
I was just thinking, it's more of a .5 new position, because we had two FTAs in building and Neil went down to half-time, so, but
Moving on to the library, number 610. Jesse Finney with us.
Good evening, everybody.
So this one's with the original budget for 2017 was $986,718, and we're increasing, we're asking for an increase of $1,012,328, and the town administrator recommendation, one million, uh, one million, nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars. And I was going through a lot of the items here, just trying to sort of calculate it, because I know everything's changing, so it's going to be a little bit different, a lot different. And also, so there is a salary decrease in there, $18,000 approximately?
I'm not sure what that salary decrease is unless it's that we reclassified one position from Amps to Tosca, but
Just found that curious, since we're obviously moving to the new places.
Yeah, it's the reorg of the Jesse, the reorg of the team library and stuff.
There was a reclassification from one union to another union as we sort of have holistically looked at the library to see what services are we going to need to provide in the new building, so that was just a slight change to one position.
To a different budget? A different department?
No.
It's, we reclassified one position to move, it's really just kind of a position swap.
She had a professional position, and it was reclassified to a support staff position, and that was the salary.
Well, within your budget, within
It was an organizational change when there was a vacancy.
So what was the big change in 16 to 7? Nancy, maybe you can refresh my memory?
Sure.
So in 16, the salary was 434, and part-time was 153, and then they jumped up 150.
That was a new position, wasn't it?
Well, I think I can partially answer that because we had a number of retirements. When we moved into Jericho Road, there were, we left several positions vacant for a time, because we knew
Three or four, I think.
Yeah. So we knew that, you know, we weren't, we actually still have 1.5-ish positions vacant. We're putting, one is out internally and will be posted externally soon. The other, we hope to fill when we're back at Branch Street.
So 16 is the anomaly here.
I'm surprised at the electricity and the gas. I thought it was, I mean, especially electricity, I thought, I knew it was going to be higher, but I thought that with the efficiency of the building that it wasn't, are we just shooting that number out there or?
No, it's based on quite detailed analysis. That's probably a really good number.
Okay. So what's up with the repair and maintenance? I see that's
Let's get back to electricity. $6,000 to $37,000?
Well, that's
So I can talk a little bit about, a little bit about that. This is partially based on working with Kevin Kelly, but also based on real numbers that we've been given by the architects, working with their engineers to give us a model of what to expect in the new building. And the architect actually wrote me a really detailed email to explain his reasoning for the increase in costs, and also some potential measures we could take to reduce that. But, you know, they're really building it to be, you know, maximum use, maximum capacity of the building. So, you know, it is possible that there'll be, you know, it won't go up to that level, but we want to account for the maximum use of the space. Even though the building is only about 7,000 or 8,000 square feet more than the original building, it's really double the used square footage. So now there's very little back-of-house, whereas it used to be that the lower level was almost entirely back-of-house. So it wasn't, you know, it wasn't well-heated, it wasn't well-cooled, there weren't very many lights. This is completely different. There's also a potential for after-hours use of two of the spaces in the library, so they're accounting for potential late-night meetings or things like that, where the lights will be on, the HVAC will still be running. And one thing that's going to, you know, potentially add to the cost is the increase in the windows, which is a good thing, but it could potentially, you know, let out more, a little more energy. But in, on the flip side, you know, we also have a lot of daylight sensors and things like that on the lighting, so, you know, that could also help offset that some as well.
It seems like yesterday we were talking about, you know, granted the building being so much bigger, that how much more efficient it was going to be, that the utilities weren't going to cost us that much more, you know?
You know, it's my understanding that all new buildings, you know, are going to cost more because there's just more, there are more systems in place, there's more lighting in place, the HVAC is, you know, the envelope of the building is a lot different. The systems that are there, we used to have a passive air-return system, now we have an air handler, so it's just a really different type of a system that's being used.
I hear you saying that, but it's two and a half times more than it was.
It's, I believe it's a 30% increase over the, it's a 30%, but you also have to understand that some of these figures are based on our utility costs at Jericho Road, not at Branch Street.
So 2016.
What can I compare to, Nancy, that's going to make me feel a little better?
There's nothing to compare to because we haven't had a building up with this additional size.
What was the building, what was the old building?
For
Yeah, like 2015.
2015.
We looked at 14 when we
Yeah. About 14.
We used the 14 numbers and went 30% over that.
So
Electricity, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My apologies. Electricity in fiscal 16 for the library at Branch Street was $22,000.
So before, when we did the original feasibility study, before we changed architects and got the new design, that figure was 23% increase in utilities. So we always knew that there would be a substantial increase in the utilities. So this is 7% more than the original design before we changed.
But we're looking at numbers that are $5,000 a year and $15,000 a year.
Something wrong with the 2016 number.
Because, because again, those are reflective of
Right.
A much, much smaller building.
So what's the square footage of the new building, Jesse?
It's 32,000 square feet.
So it's 32,000, and the Harbor Community Building is 7,700 square feet in total, and they're just using the first area.
It's funny, it's funny we're having this conversation with Jesse, because tonight on the way in, I talked to Kevin Kelly, and the exact same question was brought up with the public safety building. So I said exactly what you guys just said. So what do you mean, Kevin? It's a new building, all new, the latest, most efficient lighting and heating and cooling and all that. But Jesse said exactly what Kevin, I was just listening to her, you had a building that was something square feet? Did you just say the prior Branch Street building?
It was 27,000, I think.
Right, I'm talking about, I was talking about Situate Harbor.
All right, okay, but
Because that's what the prior electricity is.
Okay. Well, let's compare it to the old library. I mean, downstairs was just concrete, there wasn't anything. Now you walk, you know, as Kevin said, you'd walk into a room with one light bulb, one phone, and it's just a lot different, a lot more comfortable. Yes, things are much more efficient, but the comfort level is just, you know, with lighting and heating and cooling, it's just so much better. That's how, that's what he explained to me, because I said, "The public safety building should be," you know, you know, because we're talking about the reuse and so forth next door. And so he said, "It's going to be twice or three times." So, but you did a good job, Jesse. That's exactly what Kevin was saying.
Thank you. It's my understanding from our architects that our figures are actually pretty in line with the public safety in terms of just the per kilowatt, you know?
Per square foot, maybe?
Yes, yeah.
So let's move on to my issue, the repair and maintenance. I mean, in 2016, it's 2,700, almost 2,800, and now we're looking for around 11,500?
44 there. We're not looking at the right year.
The earlier year, they were at 11,000.
You have to look at the 2016 budget, not the
But we're dealing with a new building. That's what I'm saying. Why are we going back to a number that's 11,000?
Well, this line supports a number of different things. It supports our alarm contract, which we don't have an alarm system at Jericho Road. It supports fire pump testing, there's going to be annual testing for our fire pump. It supports the security system. It supports pest control, the annual fire extinguisher check. It supports maintenance costs for our, the people counters that we have on the doors, in addition to some other, you know, minor things that are in there. And then there's also a cushion for any issues that may arise that are unanticipated, so that's where that would come from if, you know, for some reason. Now, in the first year of the building, it's my understanding that there's a warranty, so it may not, it may not be that anything comes up that isn't protected by that warranty, but if it did, that's the money that we would go to. And it's, there's not a lot left over once you take all of those little fees out to support unexpected costs.
All right, I hear you on that. I'm just telling you, at town meeting, then you're going to be prepared to answer that question, because they're going to ask us that and say, "We've got a brand-new building, and you've got 11,500." And I'm like, you know, there seems to me
And I understand
That's a fair question to say, "Why are we spending so much money with a brand-new building for repair and maintenance?" That's all.
And if we don't use it, it goes back to the town at the end of the year. It's, it's just, it's a, it's a cushion if we do need it. But it does support some of these annual, regular, monthly maintenance costs that we have, some of which we don't have at Jericho Road right now.
I mean, John, I think you raise a valid point, but what we've tried to emphasize in this budget is we're trying to do a budget that we don't know. And rather than being, you know, underestimating what the operational costs are going to be, we've done the opposite. We've been conservative and put money there where we could have likely used at other places, because we don't want to get caught short, because we simply don't know. And you'll see that when you review the facilities budget, any available funds that I had in the operating budget, I just put them in facilities just in general, because we don't want to be caught short with these buildings. And I think, you know, the town will hold us more accountable for not planning for that, because we underestimated than saying, "Well, it returns back to the general fund at the year." But it's, in a lot of ways, it's a guess, but you're right. I mean, we'll have the itemization and, you know, the residents certainly have the right to ask those questions, but we've just really tried to be conservative.
Nancy, what was the total budget for the library the year before they went?
Fiscal 16 expanded?
Yeah. Just because we're really looking, we're looking at numbers that don't make sense because they're not apples to apples.
I think you want 15.
15, yeah.
15, Nancy.
Okay. Here, we'll make a white circle.
16 we have, yeah.
So the library looks great?
Thank you.
What's the status right now?
Well, the contractors are aiming for substantial completion at the end of March, and I was on site on Monday, and I think they're really, I think they're going to make it. They're pushing really, really hard. There are a ton of people on site right now, just really, you know, banging it out, getting it done. And then Tricia has allowed us to plan to close for three weeks in order to get ready for the public to come in, and we'll be, you know, taking all of the storage out of the town hall basement, which is quite a lot. It's 2/3 of our collection, plus, you know, some furniture that we're reusing. And then we'll have to take everything from Jericho Road and sort of interfile everything, you know, marry the collection back together and get everything ready for opening the doors, we hope, May 1st, if everything goes well.
Great.
The total fiscal 15 expanded was $876,637.
So that showed you 876.
15% increase from three years ago.
And that's COLAS and STEPS, and also meeting the town's required contribution under the MBLC. Remember, we have to maintain the same, you can explain a better budget, over a three-year period.
Yeah, so it's the, so the state wants to see the town commit to a certain amount every year. We've actually been in a waiver status the past few years, and that's really because we've been under this building project and we haven't wanted or needed to spend as much as we do when we're, when we're at full capacity. But they don't actually, they don't say, "Oh, well, you weren't spending as much, so, you know, we're going to use that as part of your calculation." They have a number that they want you to hit, and that's what they use as a calculation. So for what they think that we should have been appropriated for the last three years, plus 2 and 1/2% every year is what they want to see in order to keep us certified by the state.
What's it, like 500, 600,000 dollars?
It's just, it's a total figure, and this, this does meet us for certification. It's, you know, I want to say it's a few thousand above what we absolutely need for certification.
So you know how we combine fuel and lubricants into facilities? We put it in library so we can meet the Mars. So that's why the utilities and everything are running as a single unit for the library. Otherwise, we would be way under the minimum state requirement. Not way under, but again, we have to sustain, so guarantees the library. We have to give the library 2 and 1/2% increase every single year, period.
They wouldn't allow us last year when we set aside funds in the facility budget specifically for library, we could prove that it was earmarked for the new buildings. They disqualified that and told us we had to apply for a waiver of the MAR because we didn't meet the spending requirements. But it's like, it's right here, we did it, it wouldn't count. So that's why some things remain in the library's budget when they've been consolidated other places.
It's, it's a strict regulation and, and they are planning on, you know, enforcing it even more in the next, in the upcoming years. But it allows us to borrow reciprocally from other towns, which is a huge thing. You know, we're a member of a, you know, 32 library network and, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, really makes the people that use the library happy, really helps our students, really helps our patrons. So it's, it is, you know, it's not easy for every town to meet this, but it is important, is an important part of, part of how we provide our services.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry about all the grilling.
It's okay. And I do wanna say thank you guys again for allowing us to use the Harbor Building and also the, the space in town hall. It's been, it's been really wonderful to, to have that temporary home.
You missed the view, I'm sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Next, we're gonna move on to IT Information Technology, number 155. Plus, we have Bill Sheen.
How are you?
Never seen you.
Downstairs.
I know.
Doors open.
So we have, 2017's budget was 350, 30, 33. Your request is 320, 3260. Technical's going, has gone down, equipment's gone down, right?
Yeah, his budget's lower this year, next year.
Budgets less equipment, 22,000 and 5,000.
Yes.
We like the fact that it went down.
Something.
Buying stuff.
Right.
So there's one new person for the second year to.
That's right, yeah, it'll be, yeah.
Years ago, we added Steve. How's that working out?
It's good, yeah. Been able to really focus, right now's a real busy time for us with several buildings coming online. The financial system keeps going and to be able to have a person that can kind of take some issues that normally I would have to chase for a while and it would take me away from what I feel aren't as strategic as the things I'm doing right now, more tactical stuff. It's great, so, yeah.
So he does more the day-to-day?
He is, yeah. He's.
And the website?
We both do the same thing. I mean, I have a, a different skill set than Steve and we both still handle day-to-day issues. He just handles the majority of them. Actually, in fact, he was responsible for a majority of the work that went into our recent website redesign, so hats off to him for that.
Have you gotten any feedback on that?
We have, yes, positive feedback.
Thank you for doing that.
You, pleasure.
And the technical 148, is that the service agreements for all the software?
It is, and it's broken out. I try to be as detailed as possible. Those are all pretty spot-on. I kind of, on, on the Munis, I work with, you know, the Director of Finance to kind of figure out the, the maintenance and the different modules. And as we kind of progress with the Munis implementation and new modules come online that need maintenance for that year, then we kind of have that, that number of changes. And so, right now, I believe, I have a, I have an older copy of the budget.
No, why don't you, they don't have the detail that you have, so why don't you read through a couple of the things, Bill?
I thought you had the detail.
No.
So the, I'll start with the larger numbers, this is the most usually more interesting ones. $50,000 for Munis annual software maintenance. $50,000 for the remaining customized data services that we use during this transition. There'll be overlap as we, we still need to, you know, pay customized data services for payroll and some data processing services.
So this, this is a company that we hired to do the payroll and to convert our data?
They also do customized data, the collections, utility billing, they do all the tax collections, motor vehicle excise, sticker program, payroll, and we've now provisioned off of them for treasury and cash receipts.
Is it software or a company?
It's a company that provides software.
So we have people here doing it?
We use their software.
Right. So that's gonna go away next year?
Okay, so the permitting, software, annual maintenance, this is actually an area where Steve Moberg is gonna be extremely helpful in better leveraging this software, but that's $18,000 a year in maintenance. And that's essentially for, right now, we're using it primarily for plumbing, electrical, you know, all the permitting for the inspections department. Is that gonna go live, in other words, so that you can get it on, on, on the internet? In other words, if we were to tap in, like the, sometimes you can link into the assessors and the assessor goes to the building department and you can find out what's. Precisely, yes. So you have a workflow? Yeah. And then internally, so this software has the capability to track many different kinds of permits, but the, the perfect example is, is the building permit where it needs to, depending on where it is, what type of permit it is, what, you know, what kind of is being built. It has to go before health, planning, fire, building. And so there'll be workflows and then we can also have a record, a digital record of that workflow and the approval process.
But can, I think John was saying, can a citizen go online and see it?
Is this just internal or is it gonna be something that, you know, when, open to the public so the public can actually go in and find out? Got a building permit or there's an application with a COMCOM, you know? Just kind of look up an, an address and kind of. Correct. Do their own sort of sleuthing?
Their own, but they couldn't look it up?
Public record, bottom line is people have a right to be able to take a look at. That's what I'm trying to find out if it goes live or not. I can't answer that right now, I'm not sure on that. I do know you can apply for three permit types online right now and we.
But you can't see the status and see.
Of someone, of someone else's permit, is that what John's saying?
Yeah.
Or your own? You could certainly, I would imagine you could track your own, but if.
You can track your own, yeah. You can track your own.
But you gotta come in this building to do it?
Uh, no, not to track your own, you can go online and, yeah, as a, either homeowner or a contractor, you create a login and password for the system. You can go in there and apply for a permit and then you can track your permit through that portal.
And when will that be live?
Well, that's been live for.
That's live now?
Years now.
Oh, they can look through all that?
But you can only see whatever one you've done?
Right.
Yeah, I have to, I just have to confirm. It is possible that, it's, it's been a while since I've been in that system. I've kind of been focusing on other things, which again, it's gonna be great to have Steve and I both working on it with the, this new hire as well. I'm sure will be very interested in that system.
The planning director.
Oh, the planning.
Yeah, that's another thing, 'cause folks are individually responsible in the department for using it instead of having a more global application.
So what are the other quick software large ones? You got to 50, 50 and 18.
After the 18, from there goes to a slight increase in the assessor software, PK Associates, although we did reduce it slightly by removing a, a more expensive license from a desk, like a countertop computer and just kind of giving that computer the web interface that's on our website that, you know, anyone can look at from home. So we took one license away, so we reduced it, but then he raised his prices, so we lost it.
How much is it? How much is it?
Uh, sorry, it's 11,500. And then from there, our website, situatemay.gov, annual hosting plus the redesign. So they, Virtual Towns and Schools are a website vendor and we just recently redesigned the website and they allow us to take that fee, the redesign fee, and amortize it out over three years without interest, so that's what we did.
How much is that?
$4,200.
Ken, is this year one or year two of that fee?
This is year one. People GIS hosting. In order for those to be online and available through our website and have all the nice search tools and all the features that you see and so many people find useful, we have to pay to have that hosted. We also have ESRI as a GIS software vendor, which with the skill set, we can produce those layers, shape files, adjust them and then, then host them out on our People GIS. And the ESRI annual maintenance is $1,700. We have real Comcast, yeah, okay.
Close enough.
Great.
Anybody else? Thank you, Bill.
All right.
Moving on to.
That's Nancy's.
Number 135, Finance Director.
Good evening. Good, and how are you, everyone, this evening? So there's two notable changes in my budget. You'll notice there's a change in the salaries. There are four people in the finance, town accountant department, including our new HR director who is working out wonderfully. He just passed his one-year anniversary. Very, very happy to have him. He's been extremely useful, a great resource for everyone in the, in the town, at least in the town government. Three out of the four people in the office are now on the scale where they would get step increases, so you will see that there is an increase in my salary budget. It's due to, it's due to that. And one of the positions was slightly reclassified, was slightly reclassified upwards. So that accounts for approximately an $8,000, $7,800 difference in salaries. And then on the technical services, it's an increase of $10,000 request. Every two years, I have to request of the board and the town that they increase this budget by approximately, I get so choked up about an increase in budget, for $10,000 for the actuarial evaluation of our OPEB liability. So it's time again to find out how much our liability is. The last time we checked it was June 30th of 2015 and the liability was at $60 million. So since then, our rates have gone up 15%, but we are going to a MedX2 plan with a PDP which should help with our overall prescription drug costs. So it'll be with bated breath that we wait to see what our new liability comes out with and we will obviously have to put out a bid for that probably late June, early July to get that done as soon as possible because it needs to be incorporated in our fiscal 17 financials.
So we have to pay someone $10,000 to tell us that we.
How about 65 million or something?
Yes. We have to pay an actuary to calculate it for us with our new mortality table saying we live longer and thus cost more.
And that's required to get that, like a certified?
Yeah. It's a GASB.
General, GASB 45? 36?
Yeah, now there's.
22?
67, GASB, yeah. And you already have the fruits of our labor with our capital project to migrate to our integrated financial management program. General ledger has migrated, purchase orders and accounts payable have migrated, budget migrated, and we are currently working on payroll, human resources.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Moving on to Chief, you're our police department, number 210.
Good evening.
So your budget went down?
Yes, it did.
$300,000. Oh, no, sorry, 220,000. How'd you do that?
Wasn't easy. We've, some things have been, such as training and other things, were incorporated into the town administrator's budget, our fuel, our training and things. But one of the things that we're going to do this year, our in-service training, every officer has to go back every year for 40 hours of in-service training. We were able to accomplish that by doing our own firearms, which we'll continue to do. So we, every year, we send our officers, our officers down to Plymouth for four days and you get travel expenses, you got lunch and you have overtime involved in it. You gotta take people off of shifts, which we're allowed to do. And we try to schedule them as best we can to avoid the payment of overtime, but inevitably there's overtime expenses incurred. This year, at the beginning of September, the MPTC, the Municipal Police Training Council, added one day of training, which none of us had budgeted. So what it does is, that's an automatic overtime day. There's no way to avoid it. The officers work a 4-2 schedule, so Monday through Thursday, that's great, you know, we can rearrange their schedule, but Friday, they're gonna get overtime for it. So what we're going to do next year, and that's included in this budget, is we're going to do online training. MPI, a training company, has come out with a program and it's MPTC accepted, so we can do online training at the new facility, yeah, the facility is conducive to it. And officers will come in off the road and rather than sit through a four-hour class, they'll go online and complete that class in an hour and a half, taking the test and getting certified for that program. So we're saving the overtime, we're saving the travel, we're saving the lunch, it can be done while they're working. And, you know, I think the officers will enjoy it more too. It is kind of a, you know, it's a disruption of your schedule to go down there for a week. So.
So the pay went down, do we eliminate any positions? I know it's the overtime, I'm kind of looking at two years ago, the actual, the overtime's gone down considerably and the, and the pay in general.
The dispatches.
So the, so, yeah. So all the dispatching salaries, Bennys, whatever, expenses have been pulled out of both police and fire. So that's why you're seeing substantial reductions in both police and fire and then just general reductions over what they may have requested. So that, that, so again, it's gonna be like library, you're gonna have to bridge between two places.
So the budgeted overtime for 2017 reflects part of that as well then? Yes?
Yes.
So how much came out of this budget and went somewhere else?
Um, in the police budget, it was $250,000 came out of this budget and went to Department 230, which is dispatch.
Communication center. We're trying not to say disbed, but.
I'm sorry, you said 220?
250,000 from this particular budget.
So it's, all right, so that brings you to a flat budget.
Yeah, so the budget is flat for most people, right? Level services, save one or two things you wanted.
So are there any things that, that you really need that aren't in the budget?
Nothing that we can't get by this year without. We wanted to send two more officers to SWAT training. We'll put that off for a year or two. We have two that just went through the training. We will work in-house with those two to educate other officers on tactics and techniques eventually down the road. Would like to have two more trained in it, but again, that's, that's something that can wait till better times.
So all of us are, you know, really aware of the drug problems that are going on and all this stuff and what we need to do to make that, you know, a more sort of effort towards, you can't cure it, but towards fighting it?
Right. Right now, it's nothing that we can throw money at either and can come up with a simple remedy. We gotta continue with what we're doing now, is we're fighting the fight, but we're also actively involved and deeply involved in providing resources to, to families who are struggling and.
So you don't feel if we had an extra $50,000 in your budget that it would be a, because I know all the stuff that FACS does and that, that the whole department does are a huge step forward. does are a huge step forward, but...
It's a tough one to say no to, huh?
But it's not...
I think right now, we're fighting it adequately on the grounds that we have. The detectives are busy, the patrol officers are busy. We have great information, intelligence based on what's going on in Situate, and they stay very current with that. But as far as throwing more money at resources, I think FACS has that covered pretty well financially. When that grant dries up, it might be a different story, but, you know, we've still got another year or two out of that.
Good. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Marty, maybe Chief can give an update on the public safety building, since Jesse gave you an update on the library, since they're kind of proud they're ahead of the library, so.
It's not a complication, but...
As I had said in my narrative, the, you know, it's been a long process, and it's actually been, as stressful as it can be at times, it's actually been enjoyable working with the group that we have, from the OPM to the, you know, the contractors, to the subs, to the, you know, working with the fire department and the police and Kevin Kelly and the town administrator. It's been, it's been an enjoyable process. I think it's been very successful. We will be substantially complete February 21st. Dispatch will be started up in that building, communications will be started up in that building, March 1st. March 17th, we take ownership of the building. Over that weekend, we will be moving into that building. And then pretty much come Monday morning, we'll be operating out of the building, March 20th. We still will have, there'll be a considerable amount of learning to do with that building, working out the kinks and just making sure that we use that building to the maximum efficiency and effect that we can. The training room, community center, we have to get information out on that. But I can't tell you how excited the officers are. We've had all the officers up there that walked through, and, you know, it's like, I can only liken it to a woman walking into a full dressing room and seeing racks of, you know, racks for two-hundred pairs of shoes. When these guys see the lockers, the lockers we have now, you can't fit a hanger in there, no matter how you try to do it, you know? So you hang a shirt up instead of, you know, keeping it neat. These lockers up here account for being able to put a hanger in there, so you have a nice pair of, a spare shirt and a spare pair of pants. Your shoes don't have to be kept on the floor and things like that. As excited as they are with everything in the building, you should see their eyes light up when they go in the locker room of all things.
Any concern with that being the weekend of the parade with the...
I was going to say, you know that St. Patrick's Day weekend?
That weekend seems a little tough.
I question the reasonableness of turning that over to an Irish police department on St. Patty's Day to begin with. But what we're going to do, the actual, the actual time isn't carved in stone when we'll be moving. But we don't take ownership of it till Friday, the 17th. So right now, we're looking, we're getting prices from moving companies for the 18th and the 19th. Pretty much all the, at our building, all they're going to have to do is back up to the rear door.
Yeah, it's not like, right.
Everything's...
Anything else is already there.
Half of it's in boxes by the rear door already. All right? So it's just going to be taking those boxes, moving them, and putting them in the offices where they belong. The individual officers will be responsible for, you know, taking it out and putting it where it goes. So I think it can be accomplished that weekend, whether it's Saturday into Sunday. They do know already that, you know, our resources are going to be limited come 10:00 in the morning for the rest of the part of the day. So, but if we can get it done that day, and then the earlier part of the following week, the 20th through the 23rd, you know, I'll be in this building with a couple others, and we're going to have a dumpster there, and, you know, we're going to clear it out. We want to turn this building over to Kevin Kelly in a neat condition, and, you know, he can decide what's going to happen with it at that point as far as usable items in it.
Is there any cost differential in hiring somebody to do it on a Saturday versus a Monday?
Well, they're going to look into that. That's part of, we haven't got prices yet, but if it is, and what it would mean at that point is, we'd have to have the construction company agree to allow us to move in while the building's still under their control. So there's an insurance issue. It's not germantable, but it's, you know, it's something that we'd have to address.
And then, just because Chief, I know they get a lot of questions, just briefly of how you've thought out the process once you're in there after your soft opening to allow the public to see that in the series of openings you're planning?
Yeah, we plan on doing, we plan on opening and getting things squared away, and then doing a public opening. And beyond that, once we do a grand opening, so to speak, all during the course of the summer, I plan on having days, you know, Saturdays, a few Saturdays, Sundays, where we can do tours. So, you know, I definitely want the public to see what they spent their money on, and I think they'll be happy with it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, Deputy, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the fire, Chief John Murphy, number 220.
You can talk about yours, too, here they laugh.
How are you, Chief?
Good evening. How are you? How are you? Nancy, before we start, how much differential, what was taken out of this budget? We kind of do all this math up here and then find out it's...
Sure. So out of the fire budget, it was two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, sixty-six dollars.
Came out.
Came out.
Two sixty.
Two sixty-nine?
Two fifty-nine, zero, six, six.
Two five zero and two five nine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was proud of that out of overtime, too?
Yes. We just took the entire dispatch, but fire overtime, we kept whole.
That's what I was looking at. That's why I figured these, I mentioned, yeah, okay.
Communication.
They had a different setup for their, how they cover their dispatchers.
Okay.
Than the police, they're two different units.
Chief, can you explain to me, what is overtime and overtime T? What does that mean?
Training overtime?
Ah.
Yeah. So we're actually seeing a little more of a challenge in training overtime. We're hiring more paramedics. The paramedics cost about sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a year, close estimates, more than an EMT. So EMTs go out, we replace them with medics. We have twenty-nine medics right now, and two we just hired and one pending. So the more medics we bring in, the training demands are more, and the mandates they have from the hospital and from their license. And even now, the EMTs are actually getting more mandated training. So there's more strains on the training budget, so.
But it's zero.
It's zero. It was absorbed into the regular overtime budget.
It was combined. It's the only budget in the town that has a separate overtime account just for training.
Okay. So that's why the other one's up?
Yeah. We didn't take it away, we just added it to the other one.
So it merged.
Okay. I see. So you didn't actually add it on your line, not necessarily add it on her line, yeah?
Yeah. Got it.
So overall, the rest of it, there's some little increases, some decreases. We did have to increase a little bit in the medical supplies, because now we're running a second full-time ambulance during the day, hopefully at 24/24/7 at some point. Just a small increase because we're running short on the supplies, but we make that back. We've actually reduced our mutual aid, calling an outside ambulance, has cut it in half with a daytime medic. And if we can do it further than that, we run 24/7. So it's been cost-effective. I think over a year, we've gone a difference. Calculating out of two years, what we have right now, we went from one-seventy-four, we'll cut it down to eighty-two coming in. So cut that in half. And we will also increase our ambulances going out to other towns. So there's revenue to that, but the big thing is, you're having a second ambulance in town, you're going to get that four-minute response instead of a mutual aid ambulance you might be calling, you know, most times Cohasset, Norwell, and Marshall, which can be ten to twelve to fifteen minutes. At times, it can be Rockland. We've actually called Hingham, Hull. I think at one point, we called Duxbury, too, so that's a long response. So second ambulance is key for the service, but also there's revenue that can come back and offset some of the cost.
So Nancy, the part-time is zero also. Is that up?
Yeah, we took a good look at what some of these were funded at, and that they weren't actually used. So the part-time budget for thirty-five thousand dollars was there, but we couldn't substantiate why it was still being listed. Was it being spent from other lines? Some lines, we just eliminated because the funding wasn't being used. For some reason, no one remembered why we had ten-thousand dollars set aside for part-timers.
We do have a part-time...
Eleven thousand you had in the prior year was the dispatcher.
We have a part-time dispatcher, right.
So the only one that was quantified was the dispatcher.
2016, right?
Yeah.
So the other thing, too, is when we do the budget, is we don't look at the prior fiscal year, that we do a three-year history of what the budget was and what they actually had and spent as June 30th of each year. So it's really not an incremental budget that you got what you got the year before. We're looking at a three-year history to see how each line item was used, and that's how individual line items change.
Are the purchases services?
Electricity and gas were taken out, that's going to facilities also. So that's a different, big difference there.
So I asked the police chief about, you know, anything else that he needed that didn't get in the budget. Are you, do you feel you're able to adequately supply the town with the fire?
Yeah, yeah, I think we are. The only thing, what I'm trying to do and get through some grants, is we're trying to meet a lot of the ESCI study requirements. We've met quite a few of them, I can list a few, but we're looking at records management so we can actually get all the data we need. Instead of going back through a logbook and counting numbers, that takes hours, we can now have records management for all different types of data. But it's going to be important, we have a CAD system now that the police have, the IMC software, which we got last year in a grant. So now we have the same software so we can communicate with each other at the new building. Now we want to take a step further and get records management. So I actually got some pricing today, we're looking at different softwares. There's one that we really like, so they will work with us, the EMPG grant, we usually get close to five thousand dollars a year. It's about an eight-thousand-dollar software. So trying to find out where I can get this grant and another grant to try to offset the cost and pay for that. But it's something we need. It was one of the ESCI studies we had done a couple of years ago, along with, we met about five of those objectives in the ESCI report, that being one of them if we get the funding. But I talked to him about the grant, one grant that comes through every year for emergency management is close to five thousand dollars. So he said he could defer billing some of it till later in the year when he gets it. Several, a lot of departments actually do it for this grant, for this type of software. We've also, with the combined dispatch, that was one of the objectives in the ESCI report, quality assurance, a new dispatch coordinator can now do monitoring, training, and all that. We're supposed to be QI, QA on 10% of the calls every month. Challenging to get that done, everybody's busy. So having that supervisor position is going to be key to do that quality assurance in the dispatch. Also, the day shift paramedics to increase the, to find ways to not do so much mutual aid coming in from the outside, which again, takes time, loses revenue, but basically overall, the service is diminished. And the phone systems, the new phone systems, we're actually going to have voicemail, caller ID, which we didn't have before. So some basic components that are going to improve us, make us more efficient, along with this computer-rated dispatch software. So five of the objectives out of the main eight are really met, you know, with this new building and some of the technology we're looking to do, so.
But you'll have that available in the headquarter building as well, right?
The phones will get on there, too. We're going to hold off on Humrock for right now. Down the road, some of the capital projects, one of the capital projects is to do with New Bay down there, because the new engine's not going to fit in there. We need a new engine next year, it's on the capital project. So we have to do something down there on the south side of the building. We'll work with Kevin Kelly and Facilities to put a new bay on the south side of the building. So that's, at that point, we'll upgrade, because from dispatch, you'll be able to open the doors, turn the lights on, to basically get these guys and the firefighters outside the, out the door quicker. So, but also get the lights on, just like a modern fire station they've been doing for years. But now we have the technology with the new computer systems we have at the new dispatch communication center.
Great. You guys do a great job, so.
Thank you, Tony.
We're lucky, you know, just the two budgets, the fire department's four-point-six million, the police is three-point...
Three ninety.
Six.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, hopefully we get close to a million dollars bracket in revenue from the ambulances. So that's, you know, and the calls are increasing, we expect the medical costs to keep increasing, baby booms and all that. So we've talked about that, and so that just keeps getting busier and busier. So we are getting additional paramedics, which now we actually have Engine Three and Engine Four licensed along with Car Three Two, they're licensed ambulances, class five, they can't transport, but they'll have all the supplies on, so we have paramedics in the trucks. So if the ambulance is out of town, we're going to have a paramedic there, starting ALS service. So all, you know, eventually, every piece of apparatus almost now has a paramedic on, at least one.
That's awesome.
So the licenses we carry, now it's a little bit more money, but again, when the ambulance is out of town, you want to have the tools there, because if you don't have the tools and you have the medic, it doesn't matter. So you need both.
John, moving, same for you? You know, I know the dispatch will be up there on 221, but are they moving that weekend of St. Patrick's Day, or will you go and transition out?
Yeah, I guess we'll actually have to look at, I guess, it came out today, the email came out today from the OPM, and I just said, just understand, Sunday, there's going to be a lot of resources needed for fire and police that day in the parade, around the parade. So we actually have to hire extra, the police have to hire a lot extra. So, you know, maybe we can get it all done Saturday, and, you know, but we'll see, maybe it does cost less to do it on a weekday, I'm not sure, maybe we can get it done Friday.
You probably don't have that much stuff to move either, right, really?
No, most of ours is Station Three, you know, so we don't have as much. A lot of it's going to be like some of the fitness equipment, some of the kitchen stuff. So no, we don't, we're actually having, make a list, tag it, they're going to come out Friday and do an evaluation of what we're going to move up, what we're doing at Station One, we're trying to just get basically house cleaning, getting coordinated, getting a lot of our old files, some of the files down there from 1930s. So we're trying to go through them and trying to get some organization, some, you know, get rid of some stuff that we can box it up, and, you know, we have some more room up there, we have a storage room up there, so we can make some room up there to store it, have it boxed, labeled what it is, if we need to refer to it.
Great, well, thank you. Thanks.
And I would just answer to your question, Marv. Last time we met, as far as the ability to do texting during the storms. So we have the code RED, which is through the state sheriff's office. So you can go sign up, and they say if you haven't signed up since August of 2011, or now you use a cell phone, or you want your cell phone on there, to re-register. So if you go to the emergency management website, code RED, it gives you directions to call. You can go online, it's basically your name, your address, your email, what your phone cell number is, your carrier, and then you'll be on, you'll be listed now. And if we do get a storm, something significant, where texting is the way to go, you'll get that text. So we can do it by voice and by text now. So it's on the website for the emergency management that you can upgrade that, which suggests, people that haven't done it in a while...
On our website?
It's on the town website.
So I want to commend Chief Murphy, because when we had our debrief pre-winter in November, not a debrief, our pre-planning, we talked about the website, the emergency website page, and Chief took that under his wing, and there's a lot of fabulous information, current information up there, and I want to commend him for taking that on. It's really got helpful information for people, and it's an icon right on the homepage of our website.
Yeah, it's ongoing. We don't want to put everything on there, we want to put pertinent information, but we have links to get more from MEMA, FEMA, whatever it is. So, and, you know, we sent out, we're actually meeting with FEMA on March 7th to try to get the last of the funding squared away. There's actually, I think we're 90% there right now. So just some other things, alternative projects we may do, because some things we've already done with the C-Walls and this funding, so we have some alternative projects the engineering department's working on. So I'm hoping by May 1st, it's complete, potentially, potentially eleven million, five-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars. Some of it, you have to do work to get it in a match, but we're looking to see if we can get some funds up front to get design and engineering going on the priority projects. So, and, you know, again, a lot of help from a lot of people, and Nancy, the deputy, and Dan Smith in engineering has been critical, too. So we're getting there.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Great night, thank you.
Good night.
Moving on to economic development, EDC, it's number 182. Moving on to economic development, EDC, it's number 182. This, we have the chair, I believe, Ann Burvine.
Ann Burvine, Chair of Economic Development Commission. We've accomplished a lot, we've had visioning, you've been invited, you've sat through Green Bush, you've sat through North Situate. We have goals and expectations for the upcoming year. I realize that our budget has been slashed basically in half, but we've already had that discussion. And EDC, we'll all figure it out and we'll all make it work because that's what we have to do. And the other thing is, as Tricia has pointed out, we're volunteers. We are volunteers and we do need someone, a staff person, that's overseeing all of this. Because too much gets lost, because there's really, sometimes I think you can do too many things and not all of them well. So we have to pick and choose what we do. Tricia has said that we can sell T-shirts and sweatshirts with C. Situate, with our logo. And, and I believe we are going to do that, I hope, at Heritage Days. That money will go into the general fund and we'll figure out a way to get that paid for. Excuse me?
Oh, I'm just thinking of how we could use it.
So, and you know, we really would like to see Suren or Situate, we would like to see a number of different things. Would like to work on the possibility of zoning reform, if that's the word you wanna use. We have too many zoning overlay districts, you know, one on top of another, on top of another, and none of it makes any sense. So we have to streamline a few things so that then we can turn around and be more user-friendly for anyone that wants to come into town. So, that's where we're at.
So, so everybody knows, the budget for 2017 was $83,500. I'm not sure exactly how much of that you used. And the revised budget for this upcoming FY2, 2018 is $49,000.
Yes.
How much did you use from the '17 budget?
I believe we used $83,000 the last time.
I think you, with the encumbrances, I mean, with the encumbrances, I think you, you know, you engaged all of it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some of that work is still ongoing.
Ongoing, consultant, et cetera. Okay? But it's been, I think, a very worthwhile commission. And we've talked to a lot of people and we'll talk to some more people. And my thing is to get people involved. And so we will go forward in, probably in March, and have some meetings, public forums for Green Bush. And ultimately, we will go ahead and do something for North Situate with the idea of coming forward to town meeting in '18 with something for the ward.
Did have one more question, Ann, the signage in the harbor, is there more to be done down there?
I believe there is.
We originally talked about some of the parking signs being done as well, I don't know if that was ever on the budget.
Tricia?
I'm sorry, missed that, Marv.
Like some of the parking signs and the identification signs for the, some of the businesses.
That's, that's still in this budget?
It is.
And actually, Laura, I just saw something from Laura about the second order.
I asked her the question, she wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, okay.
No, we're, we're going forward.
For that, and then if the board wants to do the next piece of that in terms of parking on Front Street and other places, that needs to come back for the board.
Very, very nice. Makes the other ones look terrible.
Yes, well, we're also in the process of talking with Nancy Fay about barrels. Which sounds, you know, why is the Economic Development Commission getting involved with trash barrels? But the ones that we have look pretty terrible. And so she wants, we want navy blue barrels with the C. Situate logo, so it's uniform around town.
One of the things, the C. Situate logo's trademarked and copyrighted, but one of the requirements when you file it is over a two-year period, you have to show and then submit to the trademark office how you've used the logo. So every place we use this goes to for the support that we've taken over it, so.
Does your website count? Does the website count?
I don't know, I'll have to see, but the signage obviously does, the barrels will, T-shirts, those kinds of things, so.
Well, Ann, I just wanna say, I think your committee is one of the most productive committees that we have. I think you've brought forward a lot of great projects and analysis before us taking a look at it, especially this last Green Bush one. That was very comprehensive, and I know I walked in North Situate with you, is it Ted, is that his name as well?
Ted Bovitz, yes.
Yeah, so I just wanna say thank you to your committee, you did a good job.
Thank you, it's a hard-working committee, they are committed. I know Monty is really into the golf course, that's sort of his, his thing.
His focus.
His focus. But everybody needs to have a focus, I'm more general, you know, between EDC and planning. And, and I do think that this planning development person really is something that we, we really need. And we've needed it for a long time, so, there you have it.
Thank you, Ann, thanks for your time.
Thanks for staying late.
Mr. Chair, can we take like a five-minute break? Sure. Okay, so it's been two and a half. Just gonna break five minutes. We have a discussion and a vote of conservation restriction proposal, Karen Carlin, the CEO, Chair of the CPC.
And I am here with the indispensable Penny Scott Pipes. I don't know what we'd do without her. We were here last year, I actually looked at my calendar to see when we were here last year, talking to you about the conservation restrictions. And I hate to tell you, it was last spring. But this world moves slowly. And after we had told you we thought we had a good chance with the New England Forestry Foundation, they decided that we weren't a fit for them. So, back, back to the drawing board. And we had had the Wildlands Trust, which is based in Plymouth, on our radar screen. But, you know, when New England Forestry said no, Penny immediately said, okay, we're on to Wildlands Trust. I did send you some information and I had asked to have a link sent to you for Wildlands Trust. But for people in the audience, I'd just like to say that they are based in Plymouth. They were founded in 1973, they have a 14-member Board of Directors, seven full-time and two part-time staff, plus interns, volunteers, and 1,200 members. And I know that, for example, there are some clubs, some garden clubs that belong to the Wildlands Trust. So they're a very good community organization. They currently protect over 10,000 acres of land in southeastern Mass. And thanks to Penny, she started the process with them. And she and Frank Snow walked all the land that we have with the various people from the Wildlands Trust.
Wow.
So, and so.
How many days did that take?
It wasn't that bad, a big group came up one day.
Yeah.
And then there were a few, few smaller groups. Because Wildlands Trust, they, they have, they're bored, but they also have another group that are like them. They go out and check out the land. And when they say they're gonna check out the land, they check out the land. And we walked all the paths that we had, we made some paths along the way, trying to get into the woods to show them, and they were very, very impressed. And then they, after they got done seeing all the properties, they had to go back to their board in order to get their vote, are we a good fit for them? And in the process of doing that, I had to get some more information from them, which I did get. Brandon was a great help. And then they voted a couple of weeks ago and unanimously voted that they would love to hold our CRs. So that's why we're here, we have somebody that, we're a good fit, they're a good fit for us. And they will be coming every year to check out the properties, to walk the properties, to let us know if we're doing anything we shouldn't be doing. And their CR is a pretty standard CR. It has just enough restrictions on it, but you can farm Appleton Field. And we can do a little bit of forestry, but we have to get a forestry plan done, which can be done. There's a fellow that does that down in Plymouth, and we'll be looking into that. I know Frank is very anxious, there's a few spots that we need to do some clean-up work, but.
What about a well, Penny?
A well?
Can we do wells?
No, I don't think on conservation land, but you know what, I really don't know if a well would be allowed. That's something.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, well, that's something, that's an interesting question, I really hadn't thought about that.
That means I know that some, at least a couple of pieces of land, there is that possibility.
Uh huh.
And we need to put a CR on it if we can use a well.
Well, we have no choice but to put CRs on these properties. That's a requirement of the Community Preservation Act. So I think the question would be, could there be some flexibility within the restriction that might allow something like that?
That was gonna be my question, can we get a description of this, will they provide a description of what's included in the CR?
Yes, and I've already sent that to, I sent, sent a copy to Brandon, and I can.
You asked them specifically about a well?
I, no, but I will.
I suppose that can you?
Oh, yeah, no, I'll, I'll definitely ask them about the well.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hadn't even thought of that. But I, to be honest, I'm not sure if I'm the CR's that is allowed, but we'll find out, you know.
How come they weren't your first choice?
Why weren't they?
If you recall.
I think we went with New England Forestry first because Frank had dealings with them and we did wanna do a little bit of forestry. And that's where we aren't a good fit, all right? They're looking at much bigger properties up north and there's a lot of forestry, okay, being done on them. Where we, it's just a little bit that we were looking to do. So they, you know, loved the land, but they said, you're really not a good fit with what we're looking to do.
With their mission.
Yeah, because, you know, a trust, you know, they're all a little different.
And is there an annual fee to maintain their services?
No, there's a one-time.
One-time fee, and for all of the land we're talking about, it is, for 377 acres that have been purchased with CPC funds since 2002, it would be $88,570. A lot of which money goes into what I would categorize as a legal defense fund. Because I think if you look at, you know, how they finance themselves, if they have to go to court or they have to defend or, you know, do anything, they'd need a legal fund. And if they had to do something that related to something with us, they'd need a legal fund. So it's, it's more legal costs than almost anything else. Plus, they have a large staff, you know, compared to some other organizations. And basically, it's a one-time fee and it comes out to about $234 an acre. Both Kenny and I, Penny and I, when we first saw the, the big number, kind of like, a little shocked. But this has been accumulating over years and years and years. And we simply have to get it done. So I think we're, we're close to getting it done. Obviously, it needs your approval and it would need the approval, we'd need to, you know, do legal documents and all that. But at least we're, we're close. So the idea would be that we do have some remaining balances in some of the land purchases. So we would look to rescind whatever money we think we can from some of those balances that are just, they're just sitting there from old purchases. But then we'd probably need to add more, to take more out of the open space reserve in order to get this accomplished. We're not the only town with this problem. I did talk to Brandon Moss, he said, you know, the fact that we've made as much progress as we have is a good thing, so.
How much do you think you'll have to take out of the reserve? Is it $47,000 that you need?
Well, you know, I, when I looked at it, I had included Damon as part of the money. But Damon money, the $11,000, is still left over for parking slash access. So there are a couple of ways we could do this. So what we'd be looking at is if we eliminate Damon and we can't touch Crosby because that relates to relocating a road and getting access as well. So $36,014, we would hope that the CPC next week at our meeting would vote to rescind out of the, what's left over. And then we'd have to appropriate the balance of, what's the number there, $88,000 minus 36?
About $52,000.
Yeah, out of the open space reserve, so.
We bought the land to put it in conservation, so this is the cost of doing it.
Yeah, we, we can't not do it, we have to do it. And, you know, as they say, when you're looking at it on a per-acre basis, the cost of it is actually sort of minimal, but it's a requirement.
Penny Dim, remember TPL, the group that helped us get Youngs Bow Yod, Trust for Public Lands? Were they based out of Hingham?
Yeah, they're, they're very, very, very expensive and they're not taking anyone.
I just didn't know, I just.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I've had good experience with them, so I just.
They're organizations like Audubon and Land Trust.
We looked at them about three or four years ago when we decided we needed to find somebody else.
They're very pricey.
All right.
And these.
Wasn't a good fit?
Not affordable, really. And in the case, is it the trustees you're referring to, reservations? There was a point on their website when they said they weren't even taking any more restrictions. And the only, my understanding, what they are willing to do is to take restrictions on privately-owned property with the hope that it would eventually turn into publicly-owned conservation land or owned by them. Yeah, you know, it's a real responsibility to have, to monitor these, these parcels and to enforce the restrictions where necessary.
How long do they have to do it for?
Forever.
They're in perpetuity.
So these people have to look at this land forever?
Yes.
What if they dissolve?
And if they dissolve, they would have to find a home for their.
But they, they've been around for a while.
Since '73.
And they're growing.
Yeah, 10,000 acres in southeastern Mass, it's mostly in the Ducksbury, Marshfield, Plymouth area. But I think they're, they were excited to think that they could, you know, help Situate, so.
And the 377 takes care of everything we have?
It takes care of all of the land that has been purchased with CPC funds. And that includes the Maxwell and Hennessy pieces, which we still haven't closed on.
Okay.
Yeah.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
I guess, yeah, we're looking for your blessing here.
Yeah, we'd like, we'd like the Wildlands Trust people to know that you've agreed that we should proceed with them. And if anyone wants to see any of the worksheets they did breaking down exactly what the costs are, I'm happy to send them along.
It's on, actually, it's in the wrong place here, hold on.
What page is it?
I'm hitting this one, there's something else that's coming up. I do, go to the executive action.
Some page. So I just wanna make sure we include everything.
So you're just looking for a motion for us to approve the, what's the name of the company that you're looking at?
Wildlands Trust.
Wildlands Trust, that's all?
Per the recommendation, this community preservation to use Wildlands Trust for the town's issue, town's issue of conservation.
Hold out CRs.
So moved, how's that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job for organizing all that here.
It's a big way, we'll tell you.
It's huge, thank you for everything. I know, it's huge.
Gonna move on to the town administrative.
Thank you. So I just want to follow up on our discussion last, two weeks ago about the opportunity for us to sort of, well, that's, that's a bad analogy, to kill two birds with one stone. But in terms of the offering of the Recreation Department to see if Gates would make suitable space for them, you received two weeks ago an itemization from Mr. Kelly of the costs that would require to retrofit some low-hanging fruit. We also met with the school superintendent on Friday to discuss how we transition from the school there and being able to do some of those changes after, during the summer so that we could have a space for the rec. So really, the board after that meeting seemed favorably inclined to do that. We just wanted more, one more opportunity to get your official blessing that we can move toward retrofitting that building and allowing the rec department to go over there. Now, remember, we still have the challenge that 31% of the building needs to be occupied or it's still going to be considered vacant. The school superintendent is looking at putting the school facilities assistant director, Mr. Dillon, over there so that rec would also have somebody in the building as a resource for things that happen during the day. So we thought that that would be a good fit as well and also help us towards our. So we thought that that would be a good fit as well, and also help us towards our occupancy need for not having the building classified as vacant. So Maury's here with some folks from REC, and Nick, and any other questions the board may have, you can ask of them. But again, as I said at your last meeting, I wanna commend Maury and REC for offering this suggestion. I think it has a number of economies of scale in terms of the proximity to the gymnasium and entrances and fulfilling their needs and giving dedicated space to like spinning and some classroom teaching. And I'll, I'll, I won't say anymore, so.
I don't know exactly what I need to say. I felt like I was, we were well received last time we were here, and just wanted to introduce, this is Dave Smith, the chairman of the REC Commission, Jen McMillan, she's a commissioner, and Nick Lovato, he's my assistant director. We're, we're here just to hear the update also and to see how this is gonna progress.
Can I just ask some numbers? So the school's 90,000 square feet?
Yes.
We need to occupy 30.
Yep.
The gym counts?
Yes.
How much is the gym? $7,000, did we say?
That win's gotta be about 30.
Got to be more than that. So Maury, you know what you gotta do?
I have a problem with that.
Good.
Well, the school guy can go on the sea wing, he can have the whole seat.
The whole thing to himself.
Yeah, Maury, you're gonna have a really big office.
One room for Italian, one room for...
No, but seriously, I think, and it's, you know, you, I think you'll grow into it. I think it's, I think it's, like you said, a win-win. It's awesome.
Right. And, and I wanna be really clear that the building is not ready as is for REC to go into that, and we're working with the school department on that transition. And like I said, we had a very good meeting with John McCarthy and Kevin last Friday, and that's where we came up with Mr. Dillon. And also, the big thing to do there is to retrofit and make accessible one of the bathrooms. That is the biggest expense. It's almost 40% of the $57,000 estimated cost. The other stuff, if you remember that, 1,500 there, here, 1,200 there, and we can do that with Mr. Kelly's facilities department over the course of the next five, six months.
Where will Anne Marie end up? Like Anne Marie and maybe like this, I can't remember, Social Workers floor?
So they're in the Council, in the Situate Harbor Community Building right now.
Right, so that's gonna be changing, so.
Right. That, that, Gates would not be conducive to that. They have, the reason they are with, they were, they're confidential employees mandated reporters, so they do need private space. So there's limited places we can put them, which is why they're at the Council, Pier 44, Situate Harbor Community Building now.
So they'll stay?
So, um, for the immediate future, yes, yes. But that, actually, we're gonna talk about that a little bit under, um, something down here, under the public... Thank you. I didn't go to page two, Lorraine, thank you.
So I got a question. With the school being relocated up here now, are they gonna leave, like, the equipment that they have? You know, are they looking to, you know, obviously, there's a rock wall down at the gymnasium and the, the various things that they have there, I don't know, like, items that the PE teacher uses. I wonder if they're gonna leave all that. I assume, are they getting a whole new PE department up there? Does anybody know?
Nancy, is that part of F and F, FFNE?
I'm sure some of it's part of FFNE. I don't know if an entire, complete new outfitting of the gym and all its equipment is included?
Something, I only ask because I think it'd be helpful to REC departments, there's different items that are gonna be left behind, you know?
You're talking about the fitness center underneath?
Yeah, everything, yeah.
That all came from the Colby Cutler, when they re, did, when they got the PEP grant, they got new, and a lot of that, that old from Colby Cutler, when it was originally done, came over to Gates and they incorporated that into the junior high. So it is probably old, but...
You never know for now, just to start with. That's all I'm, I'm saying, just so that we have an idea.
No, it's a good question. I mean, like the chiefs, they're doing an inventory of what's staying, what's going. And I know the school will be doing that starting in May, so.
Plus, I don't want you to be left with having to pick up. That should all be clean. If there's anything that's not, that's useless, it has to be cleaned out.
Well, to that point, the building has to be emptied before we take possession. We've been very clear with the school department that before the school committee votes, that it's surplus and thus becomes town property, the building has to be cleaned. And Superintendent McCarthy is working towards that, and I'm absolutely confident that that's what will happen.
Maybe we should have a conversation. Well, I see, but then there could be items that we could actually utilize.
Right, and, well, we all, because, under the procurement law, we have to identify, we can't just throw out what we don't want. Everything has, if it has a value of $25 or more, then it's technically surplus, and the disposal of it is entirely different. And so the school, the, and the library, before they moved into the Harbor Community, police and fire have, are all going through that right now. What's coming, what's staying, what's trash, disposable, and what's surplus that, A, becomes available to all other school and town departments, and then B, we list, we stick it in the newspaper, and people do a sealed bid on it. So, and that's under, that we have to fall for the procurement laws.
Sure, one question. So is the school department now moving into the recreation space so that rental fee will also disappear?
The rental fee, that, from where the rent for...
You know, how they're renting down the road?
Yes.
Are they now moving into the space that was designed?
Yes.
For REC in the new gates?
And that space is being redesigned for school admin offices?
Already?
After your favorable review tonight, which is why it's on the agenda again, because we need to start spending money, and also, they need to give the go-ahead to the architect to just retrofit that space.
So, um, in terms of the, I think we all think it's a good idea. I think they'll be able to expand their programming and, and, you know, have the space to grow. In terms of what's gonna actually be done and where they're gonna go, will they, I assume, this group will go to the space and figure out how to retrofit it a little bit? Will they work with Kevin to...
That's all been done.
So you've already gone in there and said, offices here, this there, fix this, move this?
Best, best location, what has to be done, right?
We took a quick run-through, yes.
Well, you'll collaborate with Kevin through the process.
I always think it would be more planning involved, yes. I, you know, we pinpointed where we wanted the handicap bathroom, and if you're familiar with the boys' locker room, it was the big lavatory that was in there that will, is ideal. There, there are a lot of different things that we went through, but it was a quick, maybe an hour or two that we went through. I'm sure there's a lot more to come. I hope to be part of the planning process on that.
Great. A motion?
So do we need?
Or do we need a motion?
Doesn't say, but...
We agree.
Yep.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to make sure you're on board, so we can move forward.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right.
Was there a vote or?
Nope, you're good to go.
Okay.
Well said.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So under items pending, you have the latest update. I don't wanna take too much time because I know it's late and it's been a long evening. My other items update, I think you saw that the town was awarded a grant, I don't know if Mr. Moan spoke about it before I arrived, from the Seaport Advisory Council for $560,000 last week to redo the Marina, and that will result in quite a bit of new, what's the word? I'm looking, it will replace the chain and, what is it, Sean?
Chains and moorings.
Chains and moorings, thank you. Down there, be HP accessible and something that we've been waiting a long time for Seaport Advisory to release. We made our cash match at town meeting in the fall, total value's about $716,000. This is a grant that comes on the heels of the grant we got three years ago to redo the pier for the Seaport Economic Council. I think I said in our, my email, there were 16 grants awarded to communities, and Situate had the second highest grant award. So, um, good work to Nancy Durfee and Stephen, and I, Dick Eckhaus helped, helped on the application, so a lot of good work there. Thank you. The Waterways Report is out and was reviewed by the Waterways Commission last Wednesday. We hope to have their final comments and recommendations, endorsement or whatever, to the board in the next month or so, so everything can be in place for the voting season in May. The Waterways Committee is a recommending body to the board. You have, will receive a full copy of Mr. Cristello's report, and, you know, we'll have to look at, you know, any changes that Waterways may make that weren't contained in Mr. Cristello's report, so that'll be agenda item in a couple of weeks.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
Before we move on? There were probably maybe 50, 70 people there at the cafeteria last Wednesday, like Tricia's point, I didn't think this room would be big enough. There were a lot of comments made, the chairman, if there were comments brought to the chairman ahead of time, he tried to provide the answers that night. And those questions that came up that night, he wrote them down, he's gonna get the answers before the next meeting. Charlie, part of Charlie's contract was to attend one meeting, Waterways, in the public, so they figured that'd kinda scrimmage first, and then ask Charlie to come in at the end.
Which I think is a pretty good idea.
Then, like Tricia said, then they come before us. Thanks.
And the other thing is, I have one thing for what's the story, our new feature for 2017, trying to deal with some unanswered questions or misinformation that might be in the community. One of the topics that had come up in the last few weeks is that the location of a new senior center is a done deal, and the board has already decided that it will go behind Gates School. As you know, we have a feasibility study out, a contract of which you're going to be asked to award under item four coming up, to look at four sites. Those four sites were chosen because they were all potentially viable for a building to be placed on them, and that is what the town is doing, and that, I think it's fair to say, not to speak on behalf of the board, but that there is no predetermined location for a new senior center, and that is why we're engaging a consultant to undertake that study. So just wanted to add to that, is we had a master plan that was to put the senior center in Gates. So that's where this whole thing started, and the feedback that we got from the seniors was that they didn't wanna be at Gates, and that, then they took it upon themselves, I think, to look at an alternative independent building, and they put up one location for it, which was right behind Gates, and that's where we brought up, you know, three or four other parcels of land that it could possibly go on. And that's where we are with all those options. I, I would say that in Gates is still an option, behind Gates is still an option, and,
Right, it was in a spot.
The other, the other locations.
Right. So, I mean, essentially, folks want to know what happened after the sunsetting of the Adaptive Building Reuse Committee, and we are getting answers to questions that we did not have beyond that study, such as the appraisals, alternative options for Gates, and, you know, other sites that we could do. We engaged with the Housing Authority for the potential land swap on Ken Street, and that's what the feasibility study is about. So I just wanna clarify that, and that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on, we have a discussion of vote on public records request policy.
And that is Michelle. Thanks for, thanks for staying.
I got lots of work done, staying a few extra hours. Okay, so we're here, as you may know, Governor Baker set forth new guidelines for public records. They've become effective January 1st, so what you have in front of you is sort of a compliance policy that Situate is gonna strive to comply with. Just some of the new provisions under this new act. We have to designate a records access officer, or several. Tricia has designated me as the chief, who will sort of do all the tracking and logging. In addition, we have Kathy Curran, who's the default, or backup, records access officers. We have two police, two DPW, a fire, and of course, Nancy in finance. Couple of the other things is with the changes, response time, fees, the possibility of appeals if we don't comply. So it's really just a good idea for us at this point to do housekeeping, make sure everyone's on the same page, identify any records, to go on the website.
God bless.
And really make this information available, readily available for citizens. So the first step is to bring a public records compliance policy to you folks for our select bin policy. Then I'm gonna be doing some training for the RAOs first, the eight of us, and then general training for all staff, and it really trickles down to boards and committees as well, making sure they submit meeting minutes, which is always challenging, making sure everything's up on the website so that we can respond to requests easier, you know, than we have in the past.
So the new law does require that the board adopt a public records policy, so Michelle's been working on that diligently for the last couple of months.
And it's interesting, just about the minutes for a second. So a lot of people say, you know, I looked on, I can't find the minutes from the meeting two weeks ago. I said, well, you know, it depends on who, what committee you're talking about, because they have to accept the minutes that they're following meeting, and a lot of people aren't getting that part of the, you know, it's at least 30 days out, or for most committees, you know, so.
Right. They don't put a timeframe as to when they need to be up there, but, you know...
So, Michelle, do you have copies of the policy? Because I don't think we got one.
Oh, it should be in there.
Like it attached?
I don't think it went through.
I've been searching through records.
I can get it for you.
So I could email it out to all of them, and they could take a look at it, and maybe we could put it on the next meeting agenda?
Sure.
We'll put you right at the end again.
Oh, great.
Now, she won't have to come in at all. She won't have to come in at all.
I just wanna make sure we read them before.
Yeah, so we looked, you can imagine, all town councils are sending stuff out, other communities, so Michelle took all those together to craft our policy, and we reviewed it, and she, like she said, she's having the training for the RAO, so, yeah, we'll put it on for the next agenda. I didn't realize it didn't attach here either, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know why.
Okay.
Thanks for putting it together.
Yeah, no problem. It's a good opportunity for us to do cleanup and organize files and...
So one of the things we're gonna do after we train the staff is we're gonna close Town Hall one day and give all the staff an opportunity to look through their records and purge them, because one of the reasons there's a lot of paper here is nobody's using the disposition schedule for records, which is issued by the Secretary of State's office and tells you exactly how long you have to keep certain records, and if you want to dispose of them, you write to the Secretary of State, and they give you permission to dispose of them. So for instance, somebody applies for a job here. Obviously, you keep the person who you selected information forever in their personnel file, but you have to keep for one year all the applicant administration. So, you know, if we still have that from two or three hires ago, we can dispose of that, so, the, you know, and there's lots of other records that you don't have to keep in perpetuity. And so the only way to do that is really to have a day where we're not servicing the public, and people can go through that with the disposition schedules and, and, and start to get it. And then tying in with our new website and this, like Michelle mentioned, is putting as much as we can on the website so people have that immediate access, so they don't really have to go through the public request written process, we can just refer them to the website. So we're really focusing on that for this year. And Michelle's done all of it, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Michelle, for staying late.
Thank you, nice for staying. Okay, great.
Thanks for staying late again.
So the next thing you have, which I alluded to a little earlier, is you have a contract to award the contract for the senior center feasibility study to BHNA for a contract amount not to exceed $60,000. We had four bids. The Public Building Commission interviewed two companies after they shortlisted two from the four, and they are recommending BHNA out of Boston. I met with them 10 days ago to go over the contract requirements. One of the things that they have agreed to do and submitted a revised proposal is we've given them four sites, and if they determine early on that one or two of the sites just isn't viable for topographical or wetlands issues, then they will immediately stop and focus the rest of their resources on the more viable sites. The other thing that we talked about, too, is keeping an option open for maybe a potential addendum to look at another site that might be available for the council on aging, such as, you know, looking at Gates in a different capacity than was originally done five years ago, whatever. But right now, the motion before you is to award the contract to BHNA for this study for a sum not to exceed $60,000. for a sum not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Would that the board selectmen vote to award the contract for the Situate Senior Center feasibility and site study to BHNA, Bargman, Henry, and Archetype Incorporated of Boston as forward amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars?
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The next item is a contract award to the Woods Hole Group to do the phase two of the FEMA maps based on revisions, on our revisions, for fifty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. This is for them to, um, further correct the maps that we adopted at town meeting in the fall, so they can be submitted to FEMA, um, under a different methodology than FEMA used. And, um, Selectman Curran and I were at a meeting today, uh, which was the subject of this, and I will turn it over to you to inform folks of tonight's meeting.
Sure. It, I'll be quick since it's late, but it was a good meeting with both the Washington delegation from FEMA, as well as the Boston Region One office, as well as Representative Cantwell, and, um, all of our congressional and senator, uh, state senator, U.S. Senator offices there as well. Um, in that meeting, uh, the Washington FEMA group acknowledged that they have recognized, uh, the technical methodology from Woods Hole Group and have accepted it to review, um, to go into the review process. So what this fifty-one thousand dollars really is for us to approve is to pay Woods Hole Group to submit all of that technical information and review. Um, and then they will decide then whether or not two different processes may take place, either a LOMAR or a physical map review. Um, and I just want to caution residents that it's a, a long process, um, but they're working, um, very cooperatively with us and have, I think, everyone's best interest at hand. So it could be another eighteen to twenty-four months, um, before we find any resolution to whether or not it will be changes.
So the residents have to pay their higher premiums?
Until that time.
Until that time.
Yes. Unfortunately, we did, we did ask that question.
So this contract will be paid out of the legal services budget, and we'll need a warrant, special warrant article, a special town meeting, probably from free cash to replenish the legal, right, Nancy?
Can I ask a question? So this is fifty-one, fifty-two thousand. How much have we expended to date?
That puts us over a hundred, just a touch over a hundred thousand.
Collectively? Okay.
Since 2014.
So I think the Situate government is working really hard, um, on behalf of the residents to try to rectify this situation. Um, so I just wanted to thank everybody. It's, everyone's working very hard, thinking, um, trying to fix this.
Monetary isn't even a good indicator. You know, the time and energy that, that the town has put into this for the last years. I mean, the town of Situate and Marshfield literally, you know, made the whole thing be, be addressed at a higher level. So I, I think you're just hearing from misinformed people.
Yeah. I don't, yeah.
Whoever.
But basically, with very few exceptions, every department in this building's been involved in one way or another. So.
Yeah, we were just saying that Bill had to buy special software to do the overlays, and we didn't include that in the cost we gave you, Marty.
Oh, yeah?
So.
So it's been, it's been a lot of money, it's been a lot of work, and a lot of people, you know, a lot of people have been involved. So, anyway.
Um, I wouldn't say no, I'll just give people one, one piece of advice. I'm sorry that we learned tonight, because the session tonight was about insurance.
Yes.
And they suggested that residents go to the FEMA website and really look up the different insurance documents, so they can understand some of the different criteria of what they have to pay or not pay now that you've adopted the, the maps from number six.
And that's the other thing people don't understand. We had no choice but to adopt the maps. Otherwise, people wouldn't have any relief from their insurance. So we need a motion due?
So I would that the board vote to approve the contract services for additional work to correct errors on FEMA flood maps to the Woods Hole Group Incorporated with an amount of fifty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Second, Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So Marty, I just want, if I can make one quick comment, because the, um, the senior center, the, the grant, excuse me, the, uh, motion there to, to do the study, you know, I know some people think that we're just, you know, throwing money at another proposal to look at more places, and it's, it's the bureaucratic government happening. And I guess it is to some extent, but, um, but we're really trying to get it right. I think the five of us up here believe that the senior center, um, is a top priority in terms of the next capital plan. And, um, you know, we had a plan. It wasn't accepted, or it wasn't where, where the group wanted to go. And we're really just going through the steps to see what, the right place for this to go, so we can make the, the right decision and get, um, you know, building in the right place, because it's going to be there for a long time. So, um, you know, I know people are frustrated with feasibility studies and all this sort of stuff, and the timeframe related to it, but it's really in an effort to do it right. So, um, and as Marty, I think, mentioned, we have no idea where it's going to go. It could, it could go in any of the six or seven places that we've mentioned, so.
These are our other, you know, there are a couple of other options, possibly, we don't, we're not looking at at the moment. Okay? We voted now?
Yeah, I think we did.
I'm getting confused now.
So, so the next item, following up on sort of this building transitions, is, um, for the board to formally endorse, I guess, or offering, um, Situate Harbor Community Building to the Council on Aging for additional space and programming and services, uh, when the library vacates it. Um, and again, um, the charter provides that the town administrator is responsible for the maintenance and, uh, operation of all the town buildings, exclusive of the school department. So technically, you don't have to vote this, or, you know, rec going to Gates, but, um, I think, um, that I, I, I would like, and clear direction from the board that this is, has the board's approval, so we can help Mr. Kelly and the other departments and transition into these new buildings and expense some funds. Um, one of the things that, um, I spoke with Linda today, and Mr. Kelly did, um, there were some questions about PF, the Harbor Community Building in terms of, um, the internet and whether it would still be there, um, because it's specially configured now for the library, um, how the space could be used, um, weather conditions, if the, you know, she didn't know if the building had issues when we had storms, whatever. And, um, the kitchen, there's a refrigerator and a wet sink there now. That's one of the reasons allowing both the buildings to be used, um, by the Council on Aging exclusively, um, would allow their kitchens to still be used. We did talk about venting for stove there at some point. There is some work that needs to be done there that we know about already. The, uh, HP bathroom needs to be done over. Um, there's a new roof, obviously, going on this spring. Um, the, um, and, and, and so, um, I told Mr. Kelly and Linda that I would convey those to the board, but basically, right now, um, I just want to make sure the board is on, is going to approve that we begin to transition, um, the empty Harbor Community Building for additional space for the Council on Aging.
So I have a question. So is this a business, a business, what's, um, what I'm trying to look for? So it's going to be on a daily basis? It's not going to be where they've got things scheduled there, and they're going to get bounced out of there or something, right?
So the intent would be for them to use that space as their space. Now, remember, we have rec department and Council on Aging using St. Luke's right now.
Right.
So, um, what the, the hope would be is that some of the programming that rec does in the community building now could be used at Brook Street with their big multipurpose room. Um, and then eventually, they'll have all the space they need when they go to Gates. So, um, you know, this, this won't be immediate things. We'll be transitioning all this stuff probably in June, July, and August, and, because the school's not being vacated till September.
Okay. I mean, I just, just trying to get more of a vision of what, what we're looking at. Is it going to be a thing where, okay, they go get a key from somebody, they open it up like?
No, it will be, it will be their building.
Well, that's, so, let's talk about that. So you said exclusively, so it's only for that group?
Yeah.
I don't think that, I don't, that's not something I think it should be. Why can't other groups use it as well?
Laura and, um, Anne Marie would stay in that back corner.
They'll stay in the Situate Harbor.
Right. And if, 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 if it makes more sense for them, so what would happen is if the Council on Aging offices will move to the offices that have been constructed at the Harbor Community Building for the library staff. If the Council on Aging feels that they could better use where Laura and Anne Marie are now, then we would move Anne Marie and Laura into the vacated office space in the current Council on Aging.
It'd actually, it would be a good fit with Laura to still be there. I mean, because a lot of the people she's working with are related to Council on Aging.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, with all due respect, I'm not wedded to that idea. Um, you know, I met with Foss, and I met with some people, and they clearly are not, shall we say, on the same page. And I, I, I know one of the intents of it was a community building for purposes other than just one specific use. Um, you know, I think, certainly, I think, you know, senior center and the Council on Aging should utilize that space for their programming, and if their programming begins to go, and it needs to use that space on a more of a, monopolizing it more and more than I would revisit it every year. But I think there is a community aspect that should continue to utilize it to some degree. And I think we need to flesh that policy out while we're doing it. I'm happy to say that they can go down and utilize it, um, to move the offices over there at this point in time. Um, I think we have to have more of a discussion on that.
So essentially, if I understand you correctly, John, what you're saying is that it'll just revert to what it was before library moved in there, essentially, right?
I think that was.
With various people using it for?
I think that's something that, I think the board needs to get a good picture on. I think, I do think that using the, the, uh, Council on Aging and its programming should be utilizing that space, because it's, they shouldn't be renting from anybody else at this point. It's town-owned, it's renovated, it's got a lot of amenities. I like having them down there for people to go down and see the ocean. And frankly, I, I wouldn't mind seeing that being used more and more by the senior center. Um, but I don't think, I'm, I'm prepared to say they should solely have it at this point. Um, I may change in a year, but I'm just, I think at this point, I'd rather transition and see how it goes.
Do you want to for more information to understand exactly how they would utilize it?
Yeah, but I also, you know, like I said, you know, Marty's saying, well, they have the key, and then nobody gets to use it. You know, there, there could be times in the evening, places just completely shut down. I, I think it, I think there has to be a, a, a community component to be used there. It's a beautiful space that can be utilized by the public at large. And I, I don't think whether this board, or even this town, is in the position to, to solely grant it to one department for its sole use.
But the, you actually got it backwards, John. What I was trying to say was that they had been, you know, sometimes they'd have programs there, and then something else more, more important or whatever would come up. I, I've listened to their feedback in the last couple of meetings, and, you know, that one of the things that they said was if they could use it, if they knew that they had some programs there, some, mostly the activities, which, when you try and go in there during the day, you can't even walk across, because they've got people doing exercising and different things, and there's no room in that little building down there. So if they were able to schedule things there, not necessarily move the offices over there, but if they knew that they had a, a schedule during the day, afternoons, whatever, where they knew that at two o'clock, they had a particular class there, I'm sure, I think that they would be happy with that. You know what I mean? If they, that was the feedback I was getting. It was more of the opposite, that like, in other words, they felt like, well, here we are, again, going the same way, where we got to go grab a key from somebody, maybe we can use it, maybe we can't. You know what I mean?
So maybe we need to flesh out what exactly they will utilize it for, so there are specific hours of operation that belongs to the Situate seniors. I hear what the concern is down on the other end here.
Well, I think.
But I feel that they need additional space, and to your point, Marty, they don't want to continually get kicked out on behalf of somebody else jumping and, and, and prescheduling. So maybe it's just a matter of, you know, getting our, getting Linda to kind of evaluate it a little bit and understand exactly what she would utilize that space for.
I mean, I think the activities and things would be, it would be a perfect location there. But, I mean, that, you know, you could do a lot of things there, you know? But the other thing is, I, I'm sure we run into the same issue with, with occupancy, right? We can't just leave it empty with two people on one end of the building, either, because I'm sure at some point, that comes into play.
Well, again, in looking at all these buildings, we put considerable amount of money in the building to retrofit it for the library. So there are now offices there and, um, improvements throughout the entire building. So it's a, it's not the building it was before the library went in there two years ago.
Right, that's right. You actually walked through the whole building.
So I, I don't think, I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea. I just can't vote on it tonight. So is your intention to move everything from the Council on Aging over there? Move all the office space there?
No, no, it, you don't, you don't have to vote. It's just, we're trying to plan. And so if you suddenly decide in three months, the Council on Aging's going in there, that can't be planned, because we're moving, you know, we're getting gates ready for this, and we're, you know, emptying the library for that. We're, we're dealing with six buildings in various stations. I'm just trying to not be surprised and have a roadmap. So if you don't want to do anything of, on this for the next four or five months, that's fine with me.
Let me, no, wait. Sean, let me finish. I just need to know what your intention is, because you used the word exclusively, and you said move offices. So is your intention to get off of Brook Street and move everything over there, and that's?
No, that's not my intention. My intention is to provide the Council on Aging with supplemental space there, so that they're not working out of, uh, a box. And because the offices there are brand new, and because we would be redoing the HP bathrooms anyway, that's going to double the space they have available now for program.
So what offices?
So I was just figuring if they had their offices there.
You gotta go check it out.
Um, if they had their offices there, they would, you know, sort of operate from there, so it would be their space.
How many offices are on Brook Street?
One, two, three.
Depends on what you're calling them.
Jenny, Jenny, Jill, Linda, there's three, but there's no walls. There's no walls. They're partitions.
So you are, so you are thinking about moving those three people so that their, their job would be at?
That, that, that is our thinking, because there's actual offices with walls and doors.
Because you have HIPAA problems in that building right now, anyway.
Where?
At the existing building.
And then, the space, the, the open space, they'd run, so they'd run programs out of both buildings? Is that what you're thinking?
That's not a good idea. All right. This, we know what's going to happen in February, okay? This building's going to be empty, the library's going to move, Pier Forty-four's going to be empty. Move the seniors back to Pier Forty-four. And it's ten-thirty at night, but it's just, sell Brook Street. You're very concerned about having all these buildings and maintaining and heating them. I think Brook Street should go. Sell it. Stay, you know, Pier Forty-four would be suitable for a, a period of time until we can find something better.
Temporary senior center, yeah.
Temporary. What's temporary here? Temporary, temporary could be fifty years here, but, you know, in any town, but, but you know, but, yeah.
That's their, their, Sean.
I realize that, but it's a lot better than Brook Street. You talked about offices, the offices, the dimensions of their cubicles now are, you know, very small. I haven't really seen the offices at Pier Forty-four since they, you know, you and I walked through in the beginning. But the square footage of Pier Forty-four has to be a lot bigger than two or three times.
Well, that was a thought, not to replace, but to supplement.
I just don't like the idea of bouncing back and forth.
Well, again, I just, I saw the Brook Street is still being them able to have programs there, and, and they have the kitchen there still. So, but again, we can schedule this for another agenda item. It's not on fire, it's just, we've been talking about that since the retreat last August, and now it's sort of just in this overall, how do we deal with these buildings now?
All we're really voting on here is the supplemental space, which I think we all agree on, right?
No, I think, um, what, we just need a little bit more information as to exactly how they want to use this space. How the two spaces would be utilized.
Who makes that decision now?
Well, we need a little bit of advice from Linda and staff, and what programming they would move there. Is it daytime, is it nighttime?
And I'm sure we're going to hear about it in about five minutes from Gordon and all his group there, so.
I'm sure.
We've got to get feedback in terms of, which is fine.
Yeah.
Right. And I mean, no, this is to give the seniors more space until we find where their, their new space is going to be.
You know, they were able, it was supplemental space before the library went in there.
Yes, that they had with rec and that didn't have any, I mean, I was looking at it for privacy and additional office space to do their mission, you know. But again, you know, we can discuss it later and I'm happy to take your questions to get you the answers that you need.
It was different though, funny. They literally had to get a key, go down and lock the door and use it.
Yeah. And the problem is what?
I'm saying, oh, no, you can't because someone, somebody else has heard it happen a couple of times. So I'm just saying, it's, it's not something that they, that they're attracted to because of the way it was before. And we're not, I don't think we're talking, I don't think we're talking about that again. If we are, then I would be against that, so.
All right. So we'll, we'll get some answers and put it back on your agenda in a month, you know. All right, good. Thank you. And then you have a memo that I sent out, just the planning board's been working on a draft medical marijuana moratorium, but the timing, I also emailed it to all of you today. The timing for town meeting will be extremely tight. I've been doing a survey of other towns. What I'm sort of recommending right now is we sort of wait and see until the legislature comes up with more regulations. The chief would like to pursue, and we might want to do this for town meeting, if we, if the board's so inclined, to try to draft a bylaw that's sort of like an open container bylaw, but it deals with marijuana use. So sort of like alcohol, he's, he's much more looking forward toward an enforcement mechanism in the public as opposed to sort of, you know,
Restricting.
Restricting stuff right now until we know more about the, what the legislature's going to do.
And the law's very, I don't really, haven't really read the law, but, so for instance, you can't buy cigarettes in the town of Situate unless you're 21 years old. So does that mean you can't smoke in Situate unless you're 21 years old? And can you still smoke pot because that's the way the law was passed at 18? Or what was, you know, what's the real law?
Yeah. Yeah. So there's lots of questions and there's various options, either through zoning or bylaws or through ballots.
I think we have to do both. I think we have to create a policy from the board. I think the board's got to have to deal with the licensure of it. You know, I think there's a zoning component. I think they have to be careful with the zoning because while we don't want it in the residential area, you don't want it necessarily contained as you provided to us from East Bridgewater and try to zone it in one location because it's based on 20% of what you sell for. I thought it was either liquor. I don't think it's just beer and wine. It's if you're liquor establishments. So, and obviously that could mean two or three, not that they're going to be opening up, you know, pot shops up and down Situate. But, you know, you have to take, take a look long term. I mean, we have a number of liquor establishments, given this passage, then presumably in the future, they're going to probably grow. So, you know, you got to hope that it's away from schools, hope that it's away from residential areas, playgrounds, recreational things, and just, you know, try to contain it so that it's handled in the adult fashion. And, you know, there's also a tax to it, excise tax. I think you are like a meals tax that you're able to tax onto it. So, you know.
But we also have to be, you know, we can't wait. We've got to-
You've got to act on it.
Get something on the books quickly.
I'm wondering like-
It's coming.
Between now and like special town meeting, if we're going to have one, certainly from a policy we can work on. If the planning's looking at trying to zone and identify areas in conjunction, maybe we could-
Well, and I think we need to talk about do we even have, it's under our purview to even create a bylaw that restricts it completely to be sold.
I was going to ask a question. Can we say no?
You can't restrict it completely.
It says prohibit one or more types of marijuana establishments from operating in the municipality.
Do you have to, because I know we barely, we barely voted against it, correct?
You can't zone against it. You can do a moratorium to study it. The only way you can prohibit it is to do a ballot election.
Yeah, it says by the vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, let's do a moratorium to, to research it.
And then get the ballot.
And if we want to, put it on the ballot.
Put it on the ballot.
I just saw, I don't know if anybody saw the vehicles. They were having people use marijuana and then try driving through this thing. It was unbelievable.
Sorry to advertise any of this.
Oh, God.
I just think we're a town that has spent, what, $600,000 plus on fax trying to address our substance abuse. And every fax meeting that you go to, marijuana is the gateway drug to greater use. And I think we need to be extremely sensitive about that and where, you know, we're investing our dollars and how we move forward with this.
I agree.
I agree.
I mean, we got, let's do whatever we can do. I mean, I don't know what we can do.
So help me out here. So what, what?
First, do a moratorium to, so that nothing can happen until we figure out what's going on?
And so do you want to do that at the fall town meeting or the annual?
You mean spring?
Too, too late for the spring.
Too late for spring.
I don't think we-
No, they can do it for spring. It's going to be extremely tight. I mean, and we want to make sure we have a bylaw that's accepted by the AG, but that's what I'm trying to get. The board's sense is, do you want us to aim for this town meeting if we can do it?
Yes.
So we would have to open?
Well, it's your, the warrant's closed, so, but it's your warrant. It's your warrant. So you can add anything you want.
So we can put a moratorium on it for, at the annual and-
And make the bylaw ready.
And then, in the meantime, then as a result of the moratorium, we can work on the bylaw. We did this with the, we did this a few years ago with the planning board. I forgot what it was, though.
Peeping Tom.
Wasn't it when the medical?
It was medical marijuana. That was it.
Yeah.
It was the medical marijuana.
Yeah.
I remember doing the distribution. I think it was a, we set that aside for about a year. We did a moratorium.
Yeah, I think getting a bylaw done between now and, and April is not really-
It's pushing it too hard. I think the best thing is to do a moratorium, then come back. It gives us time to take a look at it and assess it.
How long can the moratorium be pushed for, John? How long can you do it?
I think we did it for over a year.
So a moratorium is like 10 years.
No, I don't think. So, okay, so I just, I want to be clear because chief and I are recommending to wait. The board is telling us to move forward at this town meeting.
Just with the moratorium.
Yeah, that's all, that's the planning board's looking at right now.
What's the harm in waiting? To Tony's point, Tony thought we, he just said we have to act. What if we don't act right, right away? Did you just say the chief wants us to hold off?
Well, I think chief's talking about a bylaw, not a moratorium.
The chief and I are not recommending a moratorium at this time. The chief is against a moratorium because it was passed by the voters of the Commonwealth.
But it wasn't-
And that's what this says about, that's what this, this says in Stoughton. Same thing in Stoughton, isn't it?
What?
But I think the local people voted against it. Or the, someone said, why are they even having a vote if the state already said that? All right.
So you don't want to put a moratorium on, but you want to work on a bylaw to control it because the state passed it?
No. What I said in the memo was that I would recommend a wait and see approach because the state still hasn't issued its final regulations. That's what I, that was my position.
But all a moratorium does is kind of freeze it for a time period. Doesn't-
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah. I get paid to have an opinion, so whatever you want to do is fine.
No, but I was just trying to say there's a lot more to learn.
I just think a moratorium at this point would make sense just to put it off.
And the planning board has drafted it. So again, but Laura told me today, they got a squeeze, so I want to make sure that's, that that was your decision. Because like I said, your warrant's closed, but if you want this on the warrant, then that's your purview. And I'm happy to communicate that to planning. Okay?
We all agree on that.
All right. So moratorium for, annual it is. Okay.
Sixty-two is fifty.
It's close.
If you count the blanks, it was almost even.
Two hundred versus-
Six hundred difference.
You're talking percentage.
Just a sixty-two, 600 difference. And 170 blanks or something.
172.
Here it is, right?
Three percent.
That's it.
Okay, on the new business.
It's a majority.
We have a discussion, a vote on some renewals, some drain layers licenses.
I move to vote to approve the drain layers license renewal for Jeffrey Morse.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the board's selectman vote to approve the drain layers license renewal for E. Watson Excavation, Inc.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the board's selectman vote to approve the drain layers license renewal for Paul DeGel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote on some one-day liquor license. I think only one, right?
I move to approve a one-day wine and malt license for Silent Chef for the rehearsal dinner at the Situate Maritime Center on May 26, 2017, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote of an accept, to accept the memorial bench donation.
Where's this going?
It's already been put in and mined at the end of the year. I usually have you accept. There's only one memorial bench that was installed in 2016.
Okay, great.
So this is the one for the year.
Okay. We just do it for tax purposes for the people who donate, you know?
Okay, great.
Move to accept the donated memorial bench from the Shea family in the amount of $2,650.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote on a board committee appointment, reappointment.
I move-
Veterans Advisory Council. One quick question, Lorraine. He was put on for what, one year? And now he's, we're going to three?
Yeah, a term of three years.
Okay. I think he was initially the one or two. For him to expire last year, it would have to be one. He might have been the short term.
I think you staggered them to create the council and they renew it three.
I think it might have been the one year. Okay.
I move to reappoint Ron Whit, Ronald Whitley, Wheatley, to the Veterans Advisory Council for a term of three years or until the successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote on seasonal population estimate for the ABCC report.
I move to approve the 2017 seasonal population estimate. As of July 10th, 2017, our resident population, population is estimated to be about 28,500 people.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents, I think we might have a couple of things, huh?
So we all received a letter from a new group, a new charity nonprofit group called Situate's Nice, which for those of you who don't know, sort of came out of the evolution of being kind and teaching acceptance to our special needs community, both adults and children. So they're hosting a fundraiser and welcome party that they invited us to on Saturday, February 18th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then other folks, you know, folks are also encouraged to, to meet with them if they're interested in helping out on Wednesdays, 7:00 p.m., the third Wednesday of every month, at St. Luke's is where they will be gathering. So it's a nice new group in town that evolved over some unfortunate situation, but good things. So thank you, the invitation. And then just an, an article about beaches and also another note from Xfinity again, running to us with regards to Comcast bill and letting us know, this is actually, they're required to tell us about the different customer complaints that they receive annually. So this is just the annual report.
Don't read my name out loud, all right?
Yeah. Yeah. But, you know, no surprise, billing.
Oh, God.
On the number one, any equipment, bill complaints. So they just report that to us annually, number complaints in town. So we do wish there was more competition in here with Verizon would come in, but we don't have. That's all the correspondence I see.
And we have approval of some meeting minutes?
Move to accept the meeting minutes of the board's selectmen for January 24th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to accept the board's selectmen approve the meeting minutes for the executive session of January 24th.
Second.
Twenty, those are executive, right? Do we have executive minutes? Am I misreading?
No.
And move, strike that motion. There you go.
That'll be in the next meeting.
Gotcha.
Okay. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Other business?
I'm just trying to get at it, sorry.
I know. I'm sorry, but you would ask me at the beginning of the meeting, also many hours ago, to get you the section of the law relents, spelled with two police details. And I have that for you. It's chapter 44, section 53C.
It was a normal, um, sentence accepted by the town in 1973. And the section attached to it, which states that the town's exception was going to be-
Ten or has to be?
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, this is about three.
Yes.
So you have a policy that said it at 10%.
But we have the authority to waive it if we want.
You have the authority to waive any fee.
Well, do we want to discuss that? Or do you want to wait till the next meeting? We want to waive the fee for the grain?
Why don't you do it after I'm gone?
Oh, you have to leave. Yeah, they, yeah, you have to, yeah.
I was just sure about that.
So are you, yeah, we can do it next week.
I know what it is. I know what you're talking about, but I, I wasn't here for-
So we'll do it next. Can you put on the agenda for next week? Right at the beginning?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll take that. Correspondents, I mean, we got that, blah, blah, blah.
Any business?
Business.
Business. I will say that our, our high school sports teams are doing great. Our hockey team is ranked number one in the state. Our basketball team has made the playoffs, both boys, and I think girls need just a couple more wins and they're on a winning streak. So Tuesday and Friday nights, go support your teams.
I don't have anything tonight.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.